Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, we have public comments on anything that's not on the agenda. Would anyone like to address the commission on anything not on the agenda today? Okay. Not hearing any. Cassidy, welcome back. If you could just turn your mic on.
Want the red, okay. Thank you, planning commissioners, for letting me be here in town staff. Thank you very much. So, yes, I'm going to talk about the historical significance of the downtown specifically in terms of its built environment. So, I've prepared something. I would prefer to read it. And then, I have a handout for you to kind of highlight some of the things that I've put together. And then, if anyone has any questions. So, let's see. Okay. So, now is the time for the town of Fairfax to define what we lovingly and timelessly refer to as our historic downtown. Like so many homegrown towns, we deeply cherish and furiously protect Fairfax's heritage. As a professional archaeologist for over 15 years and third-generation Fairfax resident, the designation of the Fairfax Historic Downtown would be a tremendous complement to our community. This idea is an accumulation of over five years of thinking about Fairfax, a sense of place, and historic preservation. I often wonder how the architecture of the downtown has been inspired by history, or art, or music, or the people that inhabit it. After all, it is a part of the historical narrative of this town. Now seems like the perfect time to visit the past, to get started on an inventory of the downtown landscape, to weave together the history of the built environment. This initiative can be completely community-based and does not require any state or federal designation, but rather a local program. In fact, there are several objectives in the conservation element in the general plan that speak to the designation of historic resources, such as buildings, bridges, streets, trees, murals, pathways, and art. In the general plan, there is a downtown center map that's already been prepared that can be used to help describe and research and photograph some of these buildings and features in the downtown. An inventory will also help to categorize the number and distribution of the downtown features. This is a fun community-building project that can create opportunities for both to learn and reminisce about the downtown. And I'm happy to see this initiative through with the experience that I have and kind of the will that I have. And along with some others who have shown some interest, and anyone else, the Fairfax Historical Society, I'm sure, has a lot to contribute as well as they're the keepers of a lot of the town's archival record. And there are more details that can be emphasized, but for tonight, I think that you get the idea of what I could contribute to this downtown inventory. And one thing I did want to note is that the results of the inventory could be used in a variety of different ways that could benefit the town. Eventually, it would be nice to develop a set of preservation design guidelines that would address the historic downtown that would help maybe later for looking at alterations to different properties, design and new construction, and examining the streetscape. So, all of that would contribute to the, to character of our downtown. So, that kind of sums up what I wanted to just highlight. And then, I have this handout here that is just a bullet list of what it would look like if someone was to start an inventory of the downtown. And then, just a little taste of some preservation design guidelines to see what that might look like down the road. So, I have these handouts with my contact information. And I guess what I wanted to just say today was share the presentation and then find out your interest and support, or see where that might fit with what you're doing now or what you hope to do.
We'd certainly like to look at that, but would the commission like to hear a little bit more from her? And then, the public can hear what the idea is that will then, we can read about it and mull it over later as well?
Yeah, perfect. That's what I was hoping. Any questions?
Just to point out, and Cassidy and I have been talking about this since our time together on the general plan implementation committee. This comes out of a number of programs that are in the general plan, including a specific program, a couple of programs that are kind of redundant, but they both say to do a historic inventory of the historic resources within the town, both buildings and possibly other resources. And to figure out a way within the town to give guidance to, for example, the design review process with regard to those. So, those are, there are about 10 different programs in the, in the general plan that all work at different angles of that. So, this is definitely something that's in our plan. And this would be, as I would see it, part of going forward with the exploring, implementation of that plan. So, I think that the commission at this time, tonight, we're certainly not in a position to begin the process, but we would be in a position to think about what that process might look like and whether to sort of add that to our list that we've been maintaining of things that we'd like to get to when we're not doing the things that we do every month. So, that's kind of, that's kind of how I'm thinking about it. Thank you, Cassidy, for presenting that. And we can go on with questions.
Okay. Well, I'm heartily behind this idea. And one of the things I would mention that we need to kind of lead to, in my opinion, is to get these historical buildings registered on the California Register of Historical Resources. This is important in, in general, but also, you know, there's a density bonus law with regards to affordable housing, government code 65915. And one of the, one of the sort of, I won't say easy, but one of the sort of less debatable issues with buildings is if they are registered on the California Register of Historical Resources. And so, I would hope that any inventory we do would lead, I mean, even though you said it's not required by the state, it's just a great idea to try to aim for that and see what, what we can get in that inventory in the register.
Yeah. The California Register of Historic Resource, Historical Resources, and the National Register of Historic Places is rigorous procedure. And so, that's the world that I work in often. So, just from my experience, kind of starting from a local place of designating local landmarks and then looking at kind of the fabric of the downtown first, and then working with property owners, because there's a lot of different pieces involved when you're actually nominating something and going through that procedure. But ultimately, that's always the goal of any historic preservationist.
And I think, you know, as we look at that as one of our, you know, list of items to work on, for me, one of my needs would be to understand the requirements of the federal and the state and local, and then what each of those, you know, the upside-downside, what we gain from going through all those processes as we look at preserving our downtown areas, understanding the requirements and what they give us.
Sure.
And what, you know, the pitfalls may be for any of those.
Yeah. Which is why now, I'm just kind of saying that keeping it local is, is the momentum and the, the ability of the community to volunteer and come together and document and research is kind of the first step. And so, I think that doing, you can do that without going all the way. Yeah. Like, Novato is a good example. Like, they've done a lot of that work, but they actually, they've put up placards and they've, they have a website that tells different stories of the different communities that have come in through their town, but they haven't necessarily gone for formal designation. So, there's ways, there's ways to work with what works for the town.
Also, the designations take a good amount of time.
Absolutely.
And owner involvement. And so, it's really two phases. The inventory can also take a good amount of time, and the designations are then really a much larger project moving forward.
Yeah. I would say the inventory would be the, the part where I would be leading that and, and then keep kind of the keeper of that information until we got to the end.
That's a very generous offer. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Can you remind me, Cassidy, what the general plan says specifically about moving forward? Does it envision the creation of a, some kind of organization to follow up, or was it more vague?
It was more vague. I was thinking of some kind of an advisory committee to the planning commission to do the inventory. And the, in the conservation element, it just, it's objectives. And the objectives are to, to organize and inventory the historic resources in the town of Fairfax so that a whole host of things can happen, you know, including tribal resources and all of that, but...
And the other thing that recently came up when we were reviewing the redesign of the beauty bar was internal as well as external historic resources. I don't know anything about the state and federal
Yeah.
...requirements, but just my little marker, I want to make sure, for the local ones at least, that we consider the elements of internal preservation, like the, the bar and the beauty bar and stuff like that.
Sure. Yeah, that's, that's an interesting one. Yeah, because mostly architectural historians look at the facade or the streetscape. And then, when a property is nominated or listed, then you create what's called like a, like a historic properties document that guides on every little piece of what you can and can't do on the inside and the outside. So, again, that's when you go the full-blown way, you have a lot of involvement with the property owner. And so, this is a way to, to keep it sitting in the community's hands more. So, I have this handout. I'll give them to you, Linda.
Just briefly, your question about internal, external, and in what Cassidy was referring to as character-defining features.
Yeah.
And what establishes, elements that establish historicity. It could be in association with somebody important to the history of Fairfax, for example. The general plan is listed on page 31. You have the handout for that, so the implementing programs. And it's, it's pretty wide open. I would also echo the, the comment about making it something that fits for Fairfax. For example, there's options about having historic districts, ways that you could preserve or encourage preservation of historic features without necessarily having to go all the way to designations, things like that. But that's certainly, if the commission desires, could be, well, it will be something that we look at, but depending on when we get into the conversation about general plan implementation, you know, how we, whether we decide to prioritize certain things.
Well, I would, I would concur that in, as I've thought about this and talking with Cassidy over the years about this, I've, I've always felt that it would, from what I understand of the formal historical, the, the listing in a historic registry of a building, it does limit the, limit a lot of what can be done. And so, I think what I've, what I've been expecting is that we would want to explore some kind of locally grown idea of what we would do with this. But what clearly is the first step is an inventory. And I think that's what Cassidy is offering to work on right now, is that inventory, really. That's, and the, in, in regard to the general plan, there's several different things that say the same basic thing in different elements, but land use, 9.1.1.1 is inventory and record historic buildings, features, and sites. On the conservation element, inventory historic and cultural resources is conservation element 8.111. And, and the, you know, there are others that go beyond that, but that would be the first step, it would be the inventory. And it seems pretty clear to me that if Cassidy is offering to carry this forward with us, then we can, we could decide whether to let that get going, and then we can come back to it as that inventory is moving along.
Yeah, I'm in no super rush. I just wanted, I just felt like a good time, and, and my schedule opened up a little bit now, so I thought I would just bring it forward.
It's, it's certainly a wonderful project to undertake. I'm wondering, do you know of any database that exists from our historic group?
Yeah.
That you could base some of your work on to, to kind of get you rolling?
Yeah, that would be my idea. So, talking to the SAGERS, the Fairfax Historical Society, they have, they have a list that they started a while ago, and I have a copy of it, and I think it's from like 2006, but it has some of the historic buildings in Fairfax. And, and they just have so much archival information and photographs. It would be really wonderful to put together some kind of a booklet for the properties in town, not just photographs, but, but stories, like bringing the people into the architecture. Because just growing up here, I, I know so much about all the generations of my family coming through and the different buildings and what was in there and things that happened. And I think it would just be a lovely way to bring that all together. So, I've seen booklets done before where you have the property, the address, what it currently looks like, and then a little chronology of its uses and its character-defining features, its architecture, its evolution to what it is today. And, and then, you know, a few people who have something to share about it. And, and that could be a database, in a database format, too. You know, it certainly could be in a spreadsheet or something more visual, but I've seen that, and that's gone over really great. And if you, if you want to look at the Sonoma County Preservation, they've got a great website and a great preservation set of guidelines, too, for design review. But they are dealing with like the Sonoma Mission, you know, like really big properties, but, but they've got a good...
There's also the California Room.
Yeah.
And I've looked at, they have, I think there's three buildings in town that have had gone through an inventory and, and on the buildings themselves, and had the forms done
Yes.
On them already.
I do have some of those, because as an archaeologist, we have permission to the different information centers where all of the historic buildings and archaeological sites are, and they fill out forms. So, yeah, I think, I think you're right. There's a few that have been done for the property just as a identification phase.
One question for staff. Can the commission just decide that we will set up this subcommittee? I don't, I'm not sure we've, I've not done a subcommittee of the planning commission other than an informal working group. Is that, do we need anyone's omni-omni on that?
Now, are you saying in the context of historic work, or?
No, in the context of undertaking an inventory, or beginning with an inventory and having it be a subcommittee of the, or an advisory committee of the planning commission.
Well, I would say, at a minimum, it should probably be discussed with the town council, you know, depending on what the work programs are and priorities and things like that. I mean, certainly, there's nothing preventing members of the commission from participating in that. And, you know, that's one of the big questions is, you know, regardless of how qualified and motivated people are, it usually takes a group of people who share those interests to really get traction and do a thorough job. So, to the extent that there's individual interest, you know, that, that certainly wouldn't be a problem in terms of saying we're going to do a subcommittee. It's an interesting question. I don't have the answer at this time, but I can find out.
Yes, I would like to get a little bit more information, too, on, on kind of the different programs and things, so, you know, before we undertake something like this, so we have a better sense of kind of what we're working towards and what it could be used for.
Talking about the different state and federal programs that you referred to earlier and what those guidelines and regulations are.
One idea that has been done before, just again, just for the inventory phase, is just to kind of bookend an area. So, you look at the downtown, there's the town center map in the general plan. You could start with that because it's there. And you just do different zones, maybe zone's not the right word, but you designate different areas. You could do districts, but that gets into like historic context for each district. But you, you could just say, okay, this is what we're focusing on this spring, you know, and this is 10 buildings we're going to work on. And then, if I can get some folks to volunteer sometime, we do, you know, maybe one group with Sustainable Fairfax, they do those walks or something. So, you could do it then and just have these, these small goals so you're, it's not overwhelming, but it's manageable. And then, it's like, oh, we've got these 10 properties. Here you go. We've completed that. And, you know, you slowly tick away. It's not something that is all at one time, but...
Right. This is a long, a longer-term endeavor, really.
Yeah.
I, I've seen a number of these, and they, they do take time. But there is a very definite format that can be used. The, the basic profile sheet is fairly standard. Would you, would you think about selecting an area or prioritizing certain types of buildings first, or?
No.
How would you approach that?
Systematically and methodically is better. So, having a map and just moving down. And I would leave it up to the planning commission or the town council to say, oh, let's do this side of Bolinas first, or, or, you know, whatever the desire is. It just, yeah.
Well, it's a lovely offer. I think everyone agrees. Are there any other questions or comments from the commission? Then, I guess what we should do is maybe agendize the item for discussion at another meeting so we can like really formally talk about it. And then, if staff could figure out the best way to approach either the town manager or the town council, if needed, to get authorization to establish an advisory committee. I'm not sure what the, what the requirements are for doing so, or if we just have the discretion to do that. But if you could get back to us on that.
Yeah. I have a feeling we'll be looping into this as we discuss general plan implementation. So, certainly, this, as noted, folds directly into several of the general plan implementation programs, so...
Our, our planning director is referring to a listing of general plan implementation steps that have been outlined and we need to undertake. And, and the historic efforts, the historic inventory have always been a part of that general plan. So, it's nice to see it coming forward. And absolutely, would be, would be lovely to have an inventory, even if we don't actually move forward with registered designations, it could be a really good marketing tool and, and character and community building for the town. So, I think it's a lovely idea, and we'll, we'll hear back from staff on ropes we might need to jump through to make that happen, but it seems like everybody's interested. And then, another way to move forward could be, Commissioner Swift has asked for a better explanation of the different programs that are out there in terms of designation or requirements for, or, or simply characteristics. A document that would list the different characteristics that we could be looking for and, and then what potential types of historical places can be designated and what the different requirements are. And then, of course, the state and national register requirements and guidelines, and kind of an overall timeframe. So, there's a good amount of lead work just to kind of take a look at it, but it's a lovely idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll, we'll get back to you, and we'll look forward to having this discussion. And, and we might be able to incorporate it into the document that the planning director was talking about at some point.
Okay.
Thank you, Cassidy.
And could I just, could I just remind everybody that I think Commissioner Swift also said she would like to know the pros and cons of the different registration levels because it can impact a property owner. So, I think you'll need that information to decide how you want to go forward.
That's true. Though, that's only for designation, which I think is quite a ways out there. It'll take some time to do the inventory, but there are restrictions on properties with historic designations that owners need to be aware of.
But we're, right.
Absolutely.
But I think having the knowledge of the pros and cons of all those, because I'm also hearing up here that we're looking at potentially, after an inventory is done, is design guidelines. So, you know, regardless of whether it's a state or federal, at the local level, you're also speaking to design guidelines which have an impact. So, I think just knowing all of that going, you know, before we go forward is, is good.
Actually, the good news is that the state offices of preservation and the federal offices of preservation do have some really handy booklets. They've been doing it for a long time on standard architectural and design features that can and should be considered. So, I think there's plenty of material out there that we don't necessarily have to create, but just with a little research, we can bring those in and, but yes, absolutely. Any other comments or questions on this item? Okay. Something to look forward to. Thanks, Cassidy.
Thank you.
No items on, on a consent calendar, so we'll move into public hearing items. The first one being 74 Cypress Drive, application 17-36. If we could have that staff report, please.
Thank you.
Also, excuse me, let the record note that Commissioner Gonzalez has arrived as of about 10, 15 minutes ago.
The project site is a little over 11,000 square feet in area and located in the residential RS6 zone. It's developed with a 1,997-square-foot, one-story, single-family residence that has three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, and a 479-square-foot garage. The project, as proposed, would involve legalizing living space that's currently in the garage, and that space would be considered a bedroom. Because of that, the town code requires that the site provide three onsite parking spaces, one of which, one of which must be covered. The existing site conditions are such that the garage is located in the side setback. The required discretionary approvals are a variance to the side setback requirements as the applicants propose to install a carport to meet the covered parking requirement. That carport would be one foot, four inches from the side property line, thus requires a variance. An additional discretionary approval that's required is a conditional use permit for the new construction of a carport, as well as the conversion of the garage to living space because the site doesn't meet the minimum area and minimum width requirements. As staff detailed in the staff report, the staff doesn't believe that construction of the carport in a variance is consistent with the town's regulations because an alternative location exists for the carport that would not result in as, it would intrude into the combined sideback, but would not require a side setback variance. And with that, I recommend that you open the public hearing and take testimony, close the public hearing, and move... the public hearing, and move to deny application 17-36 by adopting resolution 17-35.
Michelle, are there any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Mimi, I see you may have one.
Yeah. Michelle, thank you very much. I see that we have the couple of late materials from the applicant. And I noticed that we've got some signatures from neighbors who are in support of the project and are basically signing to say that they're, they don't think it's going to be detrimental, dangerous, or injurious to them, their property, or the neighborhood. And a email as well from the neighbors who, you know, when I first looked at this, one of the concerns I had about the location of the carport was the proximity to the neighbors line. Obviously, the side setback is to help to preserve sort of the space between our very close houses in this town. And so I just wanted to hear from you what your reaction to those issues are.
Yes, this, tonight was the first time I have seen those photos. The photo that you received differs from what was in your packet. There's a fence. They're now along, along the side there. I think it's, it's helpful to receive that information. But the findings that the planning commission is required to make to issue a variance talk to there being special circumstances applicable to that property, that quote, "with the strict application of the variance regulations would deprive the applicant of privileges enjoyed by other property owners." So it was staff's opinion that since an alternative location for the carport exists on the property, we found it difficult to make that finding.
Okay, thanks.
I note in the staff report that there is an option for the carport to be located, apparently, on the westernmost parking space. But I, I don't know if you have an opinion, but I certainly want to hear from the owner as to why they think that's not feasible, because that's also in the staff report.
Yeah, and I just want to remind everyone that there is another alternative to remove the illegal garage conversion and revert the garage to its original use. That's a second option.
And can you speak to, if the applicant did that with that garage, what would be required to make that back to a garage?
Sure. So we, we've been working with the owners for quite some time now about the project and about how to kind of move forward. And we instructed them that that garage needed to have a typical garage door. Right now, it's a set of front doors. There's a grade separation between the driveway and the entry into the garage. They would need to install something there to enable a car to actually access the garage. And they would need to remove the wood flooring. They would need to remove the baseboards, the trim, kind of everything that reads living space. And I think we also suggested that they, they changed the lighting as well. So we had those discussions with them. But they wanted to pursue this application. And then Commissioner Green, you had a question as well, but I forgot what that, what that was.
Yeah, what, what it was that the, and maybe it's a question for the owner, why it's unfeasible.
I didn't, they didn't provide me with, with a lot of detail. I could just assume that the, that westernmost carport location is closer to windows on their residence. And that, that was it. But I'm sure they could provide more information.
Can, can you tell me, Michelle, where staff proposes that, are you talking about another place for the proposed new carport? Where you're proposing that would, could be? Before we, before we have the applicant come forward. And one other question while we're flipping to that. The photograph that's in the staff report, is this the current condition?
Yes.
Of the former garage, which is now a, a bedroom and a laundry room? Is there also a bath in there?
That's right. So there is a bath and a laundry room. Those were permitted. So those-
When it was a garage?
Right. So, so from what I understand, reading through the file, the, the past property owner requested a resale inspection report of his property prior to sale. And the town went out and identified that the garage had been converted to a bedroom, to living space, and that a bathroom and a laundry room had been installed without permits. So the town directed them to get a building permit for the bathroom and the laundry room and abate the living space in the garage. So plans were submitted for that. The town issued a building permit for the bathroom and a laundry room. Those plans indicate, I believe it's, you know, bedroom to be returned back to garage. And so that was issued. Fast forward a few-
Was to the previous owner?
That was the, in the previous owner's residential resale inspection report. So it came up, we were notified of, of this condition, again, when the current owners came in to request a building permit for a swimming pool. And so we pulled the file and, and realized that that condition in the garage had not been removed.
And so the swimming pool was not considered then, at, at this time?
Right.
I have another question for you. We have these two photographs that were just given to us with some of the letters from the community. Can you tell me who installed this fence? Whose property is it on? Is it on a property line? And were there permits pulled for it? Were permits even required for it?
We, we just got the photos at this meeting.
So we could ask the applicant that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm sorry, will you?
To tell us where staff proposes, proposed that-
Yes.
A new carport?
Yes.
Is it a new carport or a new garage that staff-
A carport.
Okay.
So if you look at sheet A1.0, just that first sheet, and if you're looking at the driveway, it's that first parking space that's shaded. It's the one that's next to the residence there.
Closest to the house?
Closest to their residence. It would be out of the side setback, but still within the combined side, but, but out of, out of that side, the required side setback.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So why is it that we, what is the rationale, if, if anybody can tell me this, maybe it's guesswork, as to why the town requires covered parking?
So there's nobody left working for the town that was around when that requirement was put in place. I have heard different rumors, you know, in people, a lot of times now, a vehicle for some people is a big, big investment. And so what I've heard is that it was a requirement because a lot of contractors were building homes without any protection for vehicles. And so the town put in, in the code that you have to provide a covered space because people weren't doing it. But I don't, I wasn't here when it was adopted, so.
Well, that would kind of be my guess. And I just, I noticed that historically, for whatever reason, it might be that vehicles are built better with better materials, that they're more waterproof, but it might just be the price of real estate that we can't afford to have a garage anymore. But there are, I think it would probably be generally agree that there are fewer people who use a garage for a garage now and, than maybe in some previous time, at least in a place where we've got this level of real estate price per square foot. But I just wanted to ask that because that might be kind of, you, you might say that that's kind of the issue of the setback if the neighbors were complaining, which they don't seem to be. They seem to be saying that this is, at least the neighbors who have given input here, seem to be saying that this is okay with them. But if they were complaining, or if we thought that future neighbors might be, might have their, their situation compromised by this building, it would probably be more the structure, the carport structure, rather than the fact that there's a place on the ground to park the car, because the structure would occlude the light coming in the windows or whatever else it might do, occlude the view. So that's why I just wanted to, to mention that it's us that's requiring the covered parking. So, okay.
But it's in our building code and zoning ordinance that houses of a certain size should have a carport, right? A covered parking space and-
If you're adding a bedroom. So this proposal is converting this garage to a bedroom. And so that's what triggers that parking requirement.
But I want to say it a different way because, so the property was conforming at one time. It had a garage.
It's like a two-car garage?
No, it was always a little bit narrow. It wasn't a full 18, which is why the, the staff at one point le-agreed to legalize the bathroom and the laundry room, because it still retained the one space for the covered, that's only one space required to be covered. And I just want to point out that the parcel is 60 feet wide. And this structure is encroaching not only into the combined side yard setback, but also the minimum side yard setback. On a 60-foot-wide lot, you typically can at least meet the minimum of five on each side. This would, this would not do that. You would be building, you have a legal non-conforming garage in the side yard setback. It was built at a time when you could build up to the property line. Now they're asking to build a, a new structure that's, that's not going to comply with the minimum side yard setback or the combined side yard setback. And I'm just, you know, I'm going to have Michelle read the rest of the findings, because we were unable to make, or maybe I'll just do it. You want to do it? So she read the first one. "Because of special circumstances applicable to the property, including the size, shape, topography, location of surroundings, the strict application of the title would deprive the applicant of privileges enjoyed by other property owners in the vicinity. Two, the variance or adjustment will not constitute a grant of special privilege and is consistent with limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and under identical zone classifications, and is consistent with the objectives of the title. That the strict application of the title would result in excessive or unreasonable hardship. And four, that the granting of the variance or adjustment will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property in the vicinity in which the property is situated." So those are the legal, the findings that are required by law to be made before you grant an exception to the setback laws. That's what we were having a hard time making the findings, because there is an alternative location, and there's also the alternative to restore the garage.
Through the chair, may I?
Yes.
I'm, I'm a little confused by the unpaid, for the conditional use permit requirements. Can you, what is the, what is the width requirement for, for this particular site?
It's right here.
I don't care.
Yeah. It, it's 62 feet. I'm so sorry. That's on page three, under required discretionary approvals, under conditional use permit. So they're required to have 62 feet, and they're at 58.
Okay, so what you're saying is that they are less than-
The minimum, right, than the required minimum.
Okay, that's what I, because that's what I wanted to clarify, because on the site plan, it looked different, but maybe the applicant can clarify that. I just, I just wanted to verify that they are less than the width, than the required width that's required by code?
That's, the 62 feet is the width that triggers their requiring a use permit for anything they do, right. But, but that doesn't change the setbacks. The setbacks are, are five feet, five feet, and then combined, right, the five feet, five feet, and combined 20 feet. Is that, is that what you were asking, or different? Okay, all right.
Any further questions? Shall we open up the public hearing? Phil, you have something?
Oh, no, I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Applicant, could you please introduce yourself? And if you have a presentation or answer questions that you've heard, please?
Graham Irwin, architect for the applicant's. And good evening, and thank you for taking the time to listen to this project. So we've been working really hard to come up with a solution. We presented an initial design to staff, and they had concerns. And then we came up with a revision that you're looking at now that, that increased the conformity. Then we heard back from staff about a week ago, and we, we didn't have enough time to go back to them to discuss why their proposal of relocating the carport wouldn't work. But the problems with that alternative location, it, it, it's adjacent to bedrooms. So it would, it would basically be covering or shading the windows and also having a, a car pull in next to bedroom windows, meaning you'd want to have the bedroom windows closed all the time because of exhaust. The structure of the carport would, would be a difficult thing. It's a, it's a very long, narrow driveway. So, so backing down the driveway would, there'd now be an obstacle, these, these pillars supporting the east side of the carport to avoid. It also doesn't facilitate what I think the primary purpose of the carport is, is to allow people, in this case, mom and two kids, to pull in in the rain and get out of the car and get into the house without getting out in the rain again. There would be no way to do that. And the current location does facilitate those things. And I also feel that, that the structure, again, the, the window heights there are at nine foot six. So the carport in the, in the proposed alternative location would be very tall, near the front of the house. And I feel like it would have kind of a tacked-on look. And, and while I understand the necessity of zoning codes and why we should conform to those, I hope there's some, some discretion in this, because if, if, if we end up with really awkward architecture that was in fact dictated by zoning, like it's, we've put something there because zoning says that, I think it's detrimental not only to the owners of the house, but to the neighborhood as well. We don't want awkward-looking structures. And I, I think that the carport in this proposed location would basically be a nuisance to the current owners and to anyone else.
Excuse me, could you clarify, is that staff-proposed location, the proposed permeable driveway addition shown in gray?
Yes, yes, yes.
But you were considering that also be a parking space?
Yes.
Only you were not proposing to have it be covered?
Correct, correct. And so what we're trying to do is make this project actually more conforming with parking than it currently is.
In terms of numbers of parking?
Yes, because you're, you're required to have two independently accessible parking spaces, one of them covered. And currently, there's, there are, there aren't any independently accessible parking spaces. So that was, the original, the original proposal actually had a wider carport that went further into the setback to get the two side-by-side parking spaces. And we moved that space to bring it further out of the setback than it is right now. An issue- An issue in terms of the neighbor, and, and one of the reasons we, we submitted those photos, first of all, the fence was constructed. I had the applicant consult with the building official, and he explained that if it was kept below six feet, or at a maximum of six feet, there was no permit required, and there was no issue with that. And I was very careful, let's not create another issue there. In terms of the neighbor, there's about a 24-inch grade difference, and that's what those photographs are about. The houses are very close together, but the fence really doesn't achieve any privacy for the neighbor, because it's on, on the applicant's side, it's four feet high. So, they've, they've put in this fence, they have some plantings to grow on it. The proposed carport would have a trellis on that side that would go higher, and actually achieve more screening for the neighbor than a, than a fence, that basically anyone getting in and out of the car is going to be looking over. And another, I guess another aspect of this, the, the applicants want to legalize this converted garage as a bedroom, and then convert it to a junior second unit. The applicant has an aging mother, and they would like to be able to have her have a place to live in the house. And I, I think it's also consistent with state and local goals to add affordable housing to our housing stock. I think it's something we sorely need. Lastly, we would be willing to forego the carport completely if the bedroom could be legalized. So, if, if the, if the commission felt that the covered parking requirement was preferable to the side setback requirement being waived, that would be okay.
Could you repeat that?
The, the carport, the, while the applicants would like the carport, the carport is not their primary concern. So, if the commission found that the carport is too problematic, but was willing to legalize the converted garage as a bedroom without the carport, that would be fine as well. I guess, one last thing I wanted to say, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of work proposed here. They're going to be removing a fair bit of impermeable patio space to meet lot coverage and things like this. It's, it's not a modest proposal, you know? This is a, a fairly big undertaking for them, and for what it's worth, I don't think it's going to be seen by anyone as, as a, an easy, some easy workaround to skirting regulations or anything like that.
I have a question for staff. Is there the ability to waive the covered parking requirement, or a variance?
Well, we would have to grant a variance to that. So, those same findings that we, Linda read, would have to be made, and then there's an additional three findings, in addition. And we would have to re-notice this project, again, describing that now they're requesting a variance from the, from the covered parking requirement.
And can I ask, what would those three new findings be?
Yeah, and I think these can be made pretty easily. Neither present nor anticipated future traffic volumes generated by the use of the site, or the uses of the site in the vicinity reasonably require strict or little, literal interpretation enforcement of the specified regulation. Granting of the variance will not result in the parking or loading of vehicles on public streets in a manner as to interfere with the free flow of traffic on the streets. Granting of the variance will not create a safety hazard, or any other condition inconsistent with the objectives of this title.
Thank you, Michelle. And then, where would you park? Where would you propose that you would park?
It would be the same plan as this, there just wouldn't be covered parking at the carport.
What you're currently doing?
They are. They don't, they, they currently don't have that proposed new side-by-side parking, so they all park, and they park in tandem at present, on that driveway, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, approximately, how, okay, so taking a look at the plans, and the gray area of the proposed alternative covered parking space, where it says, proposed permeable driveway addition, shown in gray, approximately, it looks like about two feet to me. Approximately, how far is that from the outside wall of the house?
Three, two, three, three feet, maybe? Yeah.
And, and so, and, and the, the idea of the required covered parking space at that location, that would not be like a garage with walls or anything, right? It would be an open, like...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but that, so that's a bedroom right there, so that would be, I mean, presumably not cutting through the windows, but above, it would be above the windows of a bedroom, and there'd be a car pulling in right there under a roof next to the bedroom, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
But you would still be using that for parking anyway, right?
Yes, but it wouldn't have, there wouldn't be a roof holding exhaust in, and things like that, yeah.
And it looks like from the plans, scaling it out, it's, it's four feet. The car, that, that parking space, kind of the edge, is four feet from the wall of the house.
Was that the end of your report, Mr. Erwin?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yes, I'd like to, may I, may I ask a question? Okay, my, uh, your proposed location, what did you say, it was one foot? I forget exactly what the number, you probably know exactly.
It basically extends the roof line of the garage forward, so it would be in line with the existing garage. So, the reason, the, the eve of the garage, it would be flush with the eve of the garage, basically.
Okay. Um, you know, I, I would agree with you that aesthetically, that would be preferred, but I'm also trying to figure out how we can make it conform. I do, it does look like we have the chimney that would impede moving the carport over significantly more. I'd say five feet, but it looks like there may be some flexibility in possibly moving it to the west.
You might get, you might get a foot, maybe, unless you're driving around, you'd have to drive around the chimney, yeah.
Right, I mean, go in an awkward angle.
Yeah.
And, also, have you considered how, you know, when you're less than three feet to the property line, or special building code?
We have.
So, you've thought how you can...
Heavy timbers and Class A roofing and that stuff, yeah.
Okay. So, um, I would probably agree that, I think that that location is preferred over next to the house, but I'd like to see if there's a way where we could increase the setback to the east side.
How could you increase the setback? There's...
Narrow the, narrow the carport, basically.
Narrow the, yeah. Narrow the carport, and see if we can move it closer towards the, the chimney, because it looks like, like you said, there may be, there may be a foot, there may be a little more room there.
Well, okay, so I'm looking at this photo, did you guys supply this photograph?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm looking at that photograph. There's a car parked right next to the fence in the photograph. Is that car located in the white parking space?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that may, is that, that may be almost back against the old garage. I can't see it from this far, but...
It's hard to tell.
It's in the, it's in the white, in the existing driveway, which runs along the property line, yes.
And then, and then the building, going back from there, the building here is the, is the old garage that's been converted into a living space?
At the end of the driveway.
And there are windows there?
In the, yeah, they're, they're, they're French doors.
French, French, is that the only egress, ingress to that?
No, they, so the previous owners built a covered, and a conditioned covered breezeway from the existing house out to the, out to the, what was the garage? That, on the, if you look at the second sheet, you can see, you can see the hatched, hatched area on the second sheet.
So, that's the area that is, you're going out the bathroom area, and just sort of, is this north?
Yeah, that would be, well, the garage is to the north of the house.
Okay, so, so the breezeway, I see, so the breezeway sort of connects the, the, just outside the bathroom area, along, along to the house, and then there's a door indicated there.
Yeah, it's completely, I mean, it's completely indoors now, it's not a, it's not an unconditioned space, it's, it's part of the house.
Right, well, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, the proposed carport, it kind of also seems to be near, near windows, but those are French doors, they wouldn't leak exhaust?
Well, they're, they're, it's also the entrance, it's entrance to the house, rather than a bedroom window that you might want to leave open in the summer for, you know, the cool, the, I don't, I don't think I would want, I wouldn't want my bedroom windows adjacent to a carport, certainly not open if someone pulled up.
Right, okay.
Are you referring to the bedrooms in the front of the house?
I'm talking about the proposed, the alternative location, yes.
Okay.
While we're on this sheet, you could, you could see that, actually, so, there are bedrooms in the front, and the, all of those windows along that side would be where the carport would be.
Can I ask the architect a question? How much, what is the width of the area between the house in front of the fireplace? The house jogs in to the left, in front of the fireplace, as you're driving forward?
Yes.
So, what is the width of the area between the edge of the house and the fence, the new fence that was installed?
The distance from the house to the fence?
If, if the parking, if the proposed carport is meant for a nine-foot width?
Yes.
It looks like there's an additional nine feet on the other side, going towards the doors that lead to the covered breezeway to the garage?
It, well, it, you know, there's some, some jogging there. It's less than nine feet, with, because we tried to do, we originally tried to do the two, two side-by-side spaces there, and we had to push the carport, I think another foot or so, toward the property line. And, and there's also an access issue there, so that, I mean, it could be...
That was my question, why you couldn't pull in, make a left turn, and park two cars?
You might be able to push it a little bit, but you're not going to get, it, it becomes tricky to pull in and, and back out again, as well, with the chimney and stuff. There's some wiggle room, but, but there's not enough there to have two cars side-by-side. We, we worked through that. That was sort of our first revision.
I have a couple of questions. Can you tell me what is, what is going on with the neighbor where the carport would go? There's a window there, I can't tell.
The neighbor's actually here, so she could, she could speak to you.
Okay.
I don't, I, I mean, I don't know what those runes are, but you can talk to her or ask her about that.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, I mean, I have concerns about future property owners, and also setting a precedent.
Sure.
Because, you know, I, I think we're, we're saying it's okay to legalize the unit the way it is, because it was already there, but it's different to introduce a new structure. But I, I do have a question for staff regarding the ADU. You said, I'm sorry, Mr. Graham, you said something about a junior?
Junior second.
Second unit, and I can't recall what the parking requirements are for the junior second unit, but I, go ahead.
Very quickly, and actually under state law, we're, we're already into this regime. Basically, if you're within a half a mile of a transit route, you're not required to provide any additional parking. So, this is an unusual circumstance, in that they had a conforming lot with conforming parking, which was illegally converted, but in terms of a requirement for that JADU, or the, an accessory dwelling unit in general. Now, there are the requirements for utilities, et cetera, which the applicants will have to deal with, and that's, involves certain requirements and expenses, but the parking, the additional parking required for an ADU, or a JADU goes away.
So, that's what, I was going to ask, actually, the applicant, or Mr., Mr. Erwin, is there a reason why you can't wait to submit this as an ADU, or a junior second unit, so that the parking requirement goes away?
Well, there was, there, so, we did this, the state, I don't know the whole chronology, but the state passed new laws that the town's trying to update. This, we started this before that, based on the, the town's previous code about junior second units did not require parking. Accessory dwelling units do what's seen, maybe it's called a senior second unit, but a, the junior second unit, because it's attached and it's conversion of an existing bedroom, did not require additional parking. But this parking is not about the second unit. This parking is about making the primary residents have code-conforming parking, because of the addition of the bedroom.
So, because...
Yeah, it's not about the second unit.
Right.
It's about the bedroom, period.
It's about the bedroom for the family in the primary house?
Yes, just that being, adding a bedroom requires this parking, it has nothing to do with the second.
Okay.
But actually, I'm sorry, but it, does not our junior second unit ordinance require that the junior second unit be an integral part of the house? This is not a junior second unit. This is an accessory dwelling unit. There may be some kind of breezeway to get to it, but it's not inside the house, which is where there would be no additional parking requirement, if the square footage of the house does not increase. But, in approving this bedroom, it, it, it takes it out of being a junior second unit into a second...
No, but they actually connected, so the garage used to be detached, but, but when they were do, when they were doing some additions, they actually connected it, so the garage is now a part of the single-family house, and it's been converted to a bedroom without permits.
But then was done without permits?
So, the junior second unit has to be conversion of an existing bedroom. So, they're trying to legalize the bedroom in the garage.
But the breezeway was, was retroactively permitted.
When you say breezeway, I don't, to me, a breezeway is open, so air can go through it. This has walls, it's more of a hallway, so it's connected.
I'd call it a hallway, yeah.
It's connected as far as staff's concerned. No, no, it, it, there were, retroactive, so the bathroom, am I saying the bathroom?
The bathroom and the connection were permitted?
Connection hallway were legalized after the fact.
But as a, as a bathroom and a laundry in a garage?
As a garage, a bathroom, a laundry room, and a hallway connecting the structure of the house.
Yeah, not as a, not as a separate living space with the connected, it wasn't permitted as now, as they're...
The garage was supposed to be a garage, right.
Looking at it now.
Right.
So, it seems like there's three phases of, of, of the time history of this, right? The original phase was that there was a garage, which provide, and, and a long driveway, which altogether provided adequate parking for that house, right? And then, the second phase was that that garage was illegally converted into a bedroom, which then did two things. One was it took away some of the parking, the parking in the garage, that was part of the parking that would have been for that house. And the other thing it did was it added a bedroom, which increased the requirement of parking for the house. And that's what we're dealing with today. And then, there's a third phase, which might happen in the future, which is that if we were to legalize this, and that new bedroom in the garage stayed there, then that might be turned into a junior second unit. And that could be done, because if we sort all this out tonight, and we have enough parking, then, and that stays a bedroom, then that could become a junior second unit, because the theory of junior second units is that if it's already a bedroom, it doesn't have to have additional parking, when it gets con... parking when it gets converted into a bedroom that gets used by somebody else other than the family. That's all the junior second unit is. So that's the whole theory of why it doesn't need new parking. So that in the future is not really problematic and we don't need to think about it too much tonight, I think. Really what we have to figure out tonight is what we do about that transition from a house that had enough parking to a house that now has an additional bedroom and not enough parking and.
It did not have conforming parking originally because it didn't have two independent spaces, right? It had tandem and one covered.
The house was legally built with, with tandem parking and a covered garage at a time when it was legal to have tandem parking. In the seventies, the town, I guess, decided that tandem parking didn't get utilized that much because, you know, people have to jockey cars to get in and out. So they prohibited tandem parking, right? They would only allow the guest space to be tandem.
Prohibited it as far as counting toward the parking.
Like if you were building a new, right, but if you were building a new house, you couldn't have a parking configuration like this one. This one was legal nonconforming. It had the required number of spaces and it had the required covered space. They were legal nonconforming because they were tandem. But Michelle has a.
But, and in this, and as I said though, in this proposal, aside from the setback, this proposal is more conforming to parking than the original in terms of now. That may have been legal nonconforming. Aside from the setback, this is fully conforming parking by current code.
Only in terms of parking, not in terms of your structures?
Well, that's what.
Can I ask you?
Yes.
Why wouldn't, why would, why wouldn't you leave the garage where it is and extend the bedroom to the other side over where you built the breezeway for? Or maybe you didn't build the breezeway, someone else built that breezeway, but why would you not extend the living unit that way and leave your garage the way it is?
The applicant's bought the house this way.
Okay, so why would they not extend and create the bedroom not in the driveway and the carport not, then you wouldn't need a carport in the driveway. You would still have your legal tandem parking and a car in the garage. You would, you would revert back to your legal status.
Yeah, you'd lose, I guess you mean put it in front of the, there's a dining room back there with a patio and French doors.
I don't know. There's all kinds of stuff back here.
No, but I mean, that, that would be, I, you're asking a, a question I haven't considered, but that would be one of the implications. Yeah. I mean, I guess they could add a second floor for that matter, sure.
Could add a second floor to the garage.
Well, to the house.
Make it, make it a loft. Get an elevator up the backside.
If I may, Linda and I did some kind of designing and drawing and measuring here, or measuring. And it looks like if the car, the current location of the carport could be moved in five feet.
In towards, just slid sideways towards the house.
Yes. That there, there is room there.
That would make it, yeah.
And. But, right, they would have to request a compact variance for a compact space, which is eight by sixteen.
Are you saying there would still be two cars there?
There would be.
But shifted over, just one car and then the one tandem in the back?
Yes. Just, but the, but the actual carport would be further away from that side property line and not require that side. It would still be within the combined.
That would meet, that would meet the side setbacks?
They would at least meet the minimum side setback. I mean, the planning commission grants side setbacks, you know, relatively frequently because of a lot, the number of narrow lots you have, but it's, it's rare for you to grant new construction that doesn't meet the minimum five-foot side setback.
Particularly when there is space.
That's right.
Available to look at a different design. And were we to grant the variance they're requesting, they would have to come back anyway. We'd need new plans. It would have to be re-noticed. It would be a different project. So would the, would the applicant consider a redesign?
You're talking about moving the carport, narrowing the carport essentially so that.
Yeah, requesting a variance for a compact parking space, so it'd be eight by sixteen and then moving it.
And basically keeping the carport where it is, but pushing the wall in.
Right. And change, and making that, and making it, you know, the carport narrower.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I don't think they would have an objection to that.
So may I confirm? You're just requesting that there be a five-foot setback?
No, the staff's not requesting anything.
Okay, I mean, but we're thinking, we, it looks possible that there could be a five-foot setback.
You guys seem to be struggling with it. Staff believes there are alternatives so that this property can remain in compliance, but it seems like you guys are struggling with it. So we just wanted to point that out as another alternative. It appears that they could put a, a compact carport and meet at least the minimum side setback. Michelle.
But just to be clear, you, you would not object though if the designated gray space in the front were not covered? That would be okay then?
Yeah, that, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
But another option is to come back for a variance for no carport, correct? So that's another option for the applicant.
But in that, having to make those findings.
Is, is the requirement, and I'm, I'm just asking a question, is the requirement that the covered space, that has to be a full-size covered space? Okay, so you need a, we'd need a variance to ask for a smaller covered space than the typical covered space?
Commissioners, if I might add one thing, that when we're looking at the various issues associated with this application and Commissioner Gonzalez Parbert brought this up, is with, you know, all respect to the neighbor who is graciously saying, hey, I'll support this application. I think there is a question if the covered carport were approved in its proposed location in terms of a precedent and in terms of, you know, a bottom-line impact on a neighbor. That it's, it's great when a neighbor supports you, but it shouldn't necessarily be dependent on whether a neighbor is upset or supports it. It's what are we saying? Somebody could come in in the future, especially when we're talking about a retroactive approval for, for a conversion and things of that nature. So I would be concerned if we were approving the, the setback variance for the covered parking and putting that impact on the neighbor regardless of what the use of those, that portion of the house is and the windows in that vicinity. So, and, and I don't sense that the commission is headed in that direction to say, we'll approve that variance, but that's just a comment about one of the challenges with what the applicant is proposing. I think there are other options. You've obviously been spending considerable effort examining those and we await your direction.
Yeah, and just to, I tried to kind of verify the timeline and it sounded like we all agreed on what we were talking about, the three phases of this. But just to add to that, one of the complexities is that the original conversion of the garage to a living space was done without a permit. And so that is a complexity as well because we've, and we've discussed this, it's actually in the minutes that we're going to be approving tonight, is, is another discussion that was similar to this, where we have a situation where we, and I believe it stated in those minutes when we get to them, that, that staff said that the goal of the town was not punitive, but it was compliance. That was the goal of the town, that we wanted future people to comply with the, with the regulations that the town had. That was the goal, as opposed to our goal being to punish people in the past. So just to keep that clarified. But I guess as, as I think about this, I, I find it hard to justify on many levels requiring a garage that's already been turned into a living space, and it looks like a fairly decent living space, to be turned back into a garage just because we, you know, it, I mean, for whatever reason, it just seems like, well, that's just a, it's a sad use of resources to do that and then convert it back. So I'm, that's where I'm struggling. If we're at the point of discussing this, I think we are. We aren't? Okay, all right.
We still have the public hearing to go.
All right, never mind.
So if there are no more questions of staff or the applicant, then we need to open the public hearing and allow those comments and we may, we may have you come back, Mr. Irwin.
Thank you.
After the public comments. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this project, please step forward. Give us your name and address if you don't mind.
Perfect. John Fitzpatrick, and I have the place at 105 Hickory, which is over one and up one above the applicant's project. And I like the project. I mean, I don't know about the legal part, of course, and that you guys have to figure out yourself, but I support it and I, I'm all for it. That's my two cents.
Sir, are you at the White House that won't concede this?
No, no, we're at the end of Hickory Road.
Hi, I'm the neighbor, Anne Lamont, and I just think it looks great. It just is doable and it's plain and it makes so much sense to have an easy way for a mom and kids to get in from the rain. And it would be impossible for Gregor's eighty-four-year-old mother to find any place that she could rent, whereas there's a place that was, I don't understand variance and setback and people keep explaining it to me and I, I don't, I'm just saying that out front. I don't know the vocabulary of it. But for an eighty-four-year-old mother to be able to live there and to be my neighbor would be something I would be very happy about. And for everybody to be able to do the carport that Graham and, I mean, I've seen it. I've been on the property a lot. There's, I wish we could give them two feet of our property, but we're down a little bit. And I would really gladly give the family two feet by however many feet they needed to make this carport be completely legal, but I don't think I can. But it, on every level, in a very tight-knit community, everybody just has seen the plans. And because of the little ones and because of a elderly woman, we just feel like, there must be a little legal room. So thanks for listening.
That's very gracious, Ms. Lamont. We agree. We love children and seniors as well. That's not at all the issue. Thank you for your comment.
I, I had a question about the room, Ms. Lamont. You, you were going to tell us what, what's going on in that room in the back?
Room in the back.
Oh, next to our property.
Oh, next to our property. Oh. Yeah, it would just be, it would, it would be fine with us. It wouldn't be dramatic. I mean, we have the fence there replacing an old rotted fence.
Right, but what, what type of room is that? Is that a bedroom or is it a?
It's a, there's kind of a nook, a nookish sort of situation, and there's a kitchen. So it's the nook, right? Yeah. It's kind of like a live, it's kind of a, I don't even know the term for that. It's kind of like the kitchen overflow. It's a little funny little room. It's not very big. I think it's about nine by nine. That is the overflow from the kitchen, so you might put a dining table or something there. So there's a window, but it would, it would be done in a beautiful way, you know, and it would be, I know it would end up being really beautiful according to the plans and the possibility for putting plants, you know, to have plants and vines or whatever. I don't know what the laws are. But for me, I mean, I look out the windows and we see them now and I'm just happy, I'm happy to see and hear them. Yeah, I don't know how to explain it better.
No, that, that explains the function. Thank you.
I think it would, it would still, there'd be a sense of airiness, even though we're right next to each other. There's still a sense of airiness and, and space and sky. And I think the carport, there would be sky, which is why we like it. So, thanks.
Anyone else from the public who would like to talk about this item? Not, not hearing any more comments, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to commission discussion.
Okay, my, I'm, I'm glad we're back to discussion. I've been itching to say this. It seems to me that there is a car, so this picture depicts a car parked along the fence in the sort of the white parking space that's in the front of the property. And the parking space next to it would be, to me, more feasible access, not only from the road, but it would keep it off of the setback. You know, one of, one of my concerns, and I've been on this commission a few years, is to not create precedent that could come back to bite later on. And also realizing that properties move on and other neighbors could move in and those who love the space now may not love it in the future. So it seems what I would go for, and maybe this requires another hearing on this, is to have that gray front parking space, you know, have the applicant apply to have that uncovered. That, to me, seems like the better solution. Because if there's going to be a car parked in the white forward parking space, it's going to be really difficult to, you know, say, oh, well, we have another parking space way behind that through that little driveway. And if that were to be narrowed, then you have this chimney. The car would likely have to be parked at kind of an angle there instead of straight in. So that would be kind of my solution to the situation and maintaining the minimum setback and the combined setback is extremely important for the future and for precedent.
Do you clarify, are you proposing no carport?
Well, basically, I'm proposing that I would, you know, kind of recommend that the applicant apply to have it be uncovered. Right.
Eliminating this whole structure.
Eliminating that, right. And then, and then you have this driveway open and the carport area would be kind of open and it would be much like it is at the moment. And if there are French doors in the front of that, you know, in this picture, you know, access and egress and ingress there would be easier if there weren't a car there. So I think the whole proposed carport idea, you know, is not only illegal, but not a good idea, I mean practically. And I think.
I think we agree.
I'm, I'm hearing from the architects kind of similar ideas and I really want to defer to that.
You're saying that the carport would be illegal? That's the requirement?
Well, no, if, if in the present configuration.
I think you mean the setbacks are illegal.
It's not legal setback-wise. So I'm all for the front parking space to be uncovered and, you know, if, I just could give a hint that if the applicant were to come back with that application, I, I might be able to vote on that. But might have to deny the current configuration. I wonder about, and this is, I don't know if I can explain that coherent, this coherently, but thinking about in the current proposal, the carport toward the back there, but with the setback issue, the, it seems like there's two competing things. You, the, if, if you envision a carport as a roof with, let's say, four poles that hold it up, whatever, however many there are. If you picture that as sort of a generic carport, the poles, you don't want to have too close together because then the car, it's too narrow for the car to get in there, especially with the chimney on the left. But the roof is what would probably be more of an issue for the neighboring house, it would seem to me, because the roof would be, it's a bigger structure and that's what's going to possibly occlude the sunlight getting into the, the neighbor's windows when they would expect it to get in there. So what if the roof were a little narrower than the, so the poles kind of came out a little bit from the roof rather than being directly under it? So you imagine a couple of, of beams across under the roof that were wider than the roof and the poles under that and then the roof covering most of where the car was. Allowing the car to get in there, make that turn around the chimney without having to be so worried about being three inches away from the poles that hold it up, but yet keeping the roof from making so much of a shade. I'm just throwing this out in an attempt to find other.
The only problem is it does not seem to address the lack of setback, not meeting any setbacks.
It still would, legally, the poles would be within the setback, but the roof would not. And then, of course, there's also the issue of the possibility of, we seem to have several options in front of us, but making the carport, allowing the carport to be a compact size. You're saying you just calculated out that that might actually.
compact size, you're saying you just calculated out that that might actually fit. So we seem to have a few options.
Yeah, I guess I sort of see it a little differently than you, Bruce. I'm not sure how many options the applicant really has, if the findings, as we've heard from staff, aren't able to be made. And I think, Phil, that is the same problem with what you're suggesting, that the finding that they can't do it another way, or there isn't, you know, sort of an undue hardship or something. But I, I think that really, other than what staff has proposed with respect to the covered gray area, and I empathize with the, what the architect was saying about having the bedroom by a covered carport, I think that the path forward for the applicant would be to agree to an extension of the time for the hearing and come back with a proposal that sought the economy size variance for the carport at whatever location they thought was appropriate, given all the information that they've heard tonight.
Ken, are you considering then that you could make the findings to legalize the illegally converted garage?
If they provided the requisite number of off-street parking spots with one covered spot, albeit smaller than we would otherwise require, I think I could.
I, for one, had a client that experienced the county requiring him to completely undo a garage rebuild and put it back the way it was, and then build it again. That is totally, I mean, that's almost unacceptable type of thing. I know that's one of the ideas, but since they have, you know, as long as it conforms to building codes and is safe, I would hate to see that bedroom with the bathroom and all that for an elderly person, especially, removed. So that's, to me, not an option, and I'm not even discussing that. I think the idea, either way, I mean, I think if the compact, yeah, I think either way the applicant may have to come back. If, if you could feasibly park a car in a compact space where the proposed carport would go covered, I could go for that, too. But I just, it just seems to me, as I said before, that the, the front space is just more feasible, not only accessibly as a parking space, but would get utilized more. But the other idea, the proposed carport back there creates kind of a tandem parking situation, it seems to me, too. So, and, you know, that's, that's, I could go, I could agree with Mimi, in other words, on that idea.
I concur with Commissioner Newton that if the applicant were willing to take a look at that, and we could have, you know, and staff feels that there would be findings acceptable to the covered parking for a smaller car, thank you, that that could solve everyone's concerns.
Can I ask for some clarification? So where would that space be? Is that in the gray shaded area, or closer up where the current carport is proposed?
Where the current carport is proposed, if you feel that that would work with the setbacks, and we would have findings for that, that would make that acceptable, and the applicant was willing to look at that and come back, that might be an option.
So, we haven't reviewed that option, so I'm not prepared to say that we can make the findings for that. My point was, there's more chance that we could make findings if the structure is at least out of the minimum side yard setback, which is five feet.
Understood.
Until we actually get the proposal and, and think about it and go through the findings, because there are alternatives. They could add a bedroom somewhere else. They could convert rooms in the house to another bedroom and put in an exterior door. I mean, there are a number of alternatives. This site is not that small, so I, I can't at this point guarantee.
Right, understood. But if the applicant were willing to take a look at that and, and come back.
Right, consider coming back with a revision for you to evaluate.
You know, and if it, if it could be done, fine. If not, then we're back to addressing the issues we have before us now, so.
Excuse me, but my sense is that there are many options available here, and unfortunately, you've picked the, the least legal option of all to present. I would really like to see the applicant agree to an extension and go back and, and take a look at other design options and come back with the best and most legal option that we could make findings for.
I was going to say, first of all, I think it's great when people come forward and try to work with the town to legalize spaces. I think it's definitely a good attitude, so I appreciate that. I was also looking at this driveway, and I would hate to be the one parked all the way to the end, because I think I would crash into five things backing out. So I'm thinking, you know, the whole thing about hitting a post here and there, whoever parks back there is going to have to be a great, you know, driver. So, you know, I think we're all struggling to make this work for you guys, because I think you've taken a really big step forward to legalize this and make it right. So, kudos to you. But I, I can't, I can't approve the setback variance, because it does set a precedent that we don't want to have to come back and explain to somebody else why we can't do it for them. You know, I, I think, I don't think you're done exploring options here. And if you do move forward and do a junior second unit, then the parking requirement goes away. So I'm not even sure if you guys want the carport. I'm a little bit mixed on that, but that's kind of beside the point. So if that parking requirement went away, then, you know, every, everything would go away here, I think. I'm talking about the parking requirement. Would you, if you had two parking required, would you still require one covered? So if, if.
I don't think the junior second unit would change the parking requirement from not, from it being a bedroom. It's.
No, no, I'm talking about if, if that option were ever explored. This, the requirement is kicking in because it's a bedroom.
But a junior, to, to, to approve a junior second unit, the room has to be considered a bedroom. So it's taking an existing bedroom, which is triggering the parking.
Right, right.
And converting it.
But what I'm saying is that the parking requirement goes, the third parking requirement goes away, correct? No?
No.
Okay. No new one?
Right.
Okay. All right, well, I guess that being said, I still would not approve the variance, given the way it's presented today. So, sorry about that. But I think, I think you, I think there are solutions here, and maybe the variance to remove the carport is maybe the way to go. Maybe there are other ways to design a covered area where you can get out of the car without getting wet, without, without building a carport, you know, if that goes away. So I think you have a little bit more work to do.
The carport is the town's requirement, right? That's not necessarily something the applicants have said that they particularly care to have. They, it's just, we require covered parking, yeah.
Which they had.
The question is now just, yeah, which they had in the form of a garage, but now they don't. So if the garage is going to stay as a bedroom, then we're requiring that there be essentially a carport. Well, I, since we seem to be kind of at the point where we're starting to weigh in, I'll say that what Commissioner Newton said sounded reasonable to me, that, that I think I could support if the applicant waived the right to, you know, allowed this to be extended for another month and came back with an application that, if the numbers do actually work out to do as staff proposed to, to have the carport in more or less the position it's proposed in, in this proposal, but for compact size, and thereby meeting the minimum setbacks, that seems like a possibility.
I, I do have a concern proposing that they design, that staff design it for them. They have an architect. I think they should come back and take the building and zoning laws into consideration and propose a design that we could make findings for.
I don't think anyone was saying, though, that staff would be doing designing on it. It was just that they would go, have to.
That wasn't my point.
Go back, okay.
So could we ask the applicant if they'd be willing to extend this? I think it's not a month. I think we'd need longer than a month, right?
Exactly. It's, it's hard to say exactly how long it would take them to do the redesign and get it reviewed by staff. So I would go to the maximum, up to 60 days, and that would.
And the holidays are coming.
Correct. So, and we would work with the applicant to get it back before your commission as expeditiously as possible.
We'd be happy to do that, and we appreciate the accommodation.
Something they would have to actually sign, right, to approve?
Yes, we have a form. They verbally agreed, but we'll send the form to them tomorrow.
That would be great. We'd appreciate that. We want to work with you, but we're, we're trying to keep our jobs here and do it legally. Thank you. Does that require a formal motion? Commissioner Newton, can you turn that into a motion?
Sure. I'll move that we continue this item at the, upon the agreement of the applicant, which they've provided verbally for up to 60 days.
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carried unanimously. Thank you for understanding and for trying to redesign and rework the best solution for all of us. Okay, should we keep moving then to 61 Bellinas Road, application 1737? Staff report, please?
All right, the applicant is proposing to erect, erect a 41.5 square foot business identification sign with a signed copy that reads Bliss Fairfax. That's the business identification name. The building has only 20 feet 2 inches of frontage, which allows, which results in the code allowing the buildage, the building at 61 Bellinas Road, a total signed square footage of 21 square feet. Since the applicant is requesting to erect a 41.5 square foot sign, it requires an exception to the sign ordinance, which the planning commission has the authority to grant. We looked at the frontage of the building. It's one of these older buildings that has a false front, and it creates a large open space that we believe the proposed sign will fill in a nice proportional way. I think a conforming sign of only, what did I say, 20 square feet would look awkward in that space. And the design of the sign is visually pleasing while also being unique and being the minimum necessary to fill that false front, front area. Therefore, we're recommending that you approve the proposed 41.5 square foot business identification sign depicted in the applicant's supplemental information, based on the finding that we set forth in the staff report. And we did provide you with the drawings for the previously approved Sherman's General Store sign, which was about the same square footage. It was also granted an exception to fill that false front area. So that would conclude our report.
Linda, could you clarify, does that mean that no additional signs would be allowed on this property?
What it means is that any additional signs would have to come to you, because they're already over the minimum square footage.
But it's over the minimum, so technically no additional signs would be allowed unless they got a variance. Can we give a variance for?
Yeah, you know, I mean.
Signs over?
Yes, you can. So if, I'm just thinking, you know, out loud, like, let's say someone tried to convert the back of the building to another business and another business needed a sign.
No, actually, I was thinking in the current shop, they have that little hanging sign.
Projecting sign, yeah.
That projects from, from the doorway, and so they could not just pop that sign in as well without coming back to the planning commission.
It would need to come back to you for another exception.
For a variance.
Right, for another exception.
Okay, thank you. Questions of staff? Should we bring in the applicant?
I had a quick question, just for clarification, building colors. The only time we can address that is if there is a structural change to a building.
The way the code.
The way the code reads.
Is written right now. That's correct.
Thank you.
I'd also like to bring up that I believe Commissioner Curling, as the applicant, you would need to recuse yourself from.
That was an error.
Oh.
She is not, and that email.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Oops, I was just reading off the staff report, so.
Yeah, no, I noticed that.
That was my mistake.
And brought it to Linda's attention this morning.
And I thought I CC'd you on the email, but maybe I didn't.
Okay, thank you.
Is, is it your idea that this is, this is just a larger location for the Bliss Fairfax store that's located down closer to center of town? Is it, is it the same people?
They're relocating.
Okay.
Closing the one down the street and moving to 61 Bellinas.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions of staff, or should we hear from the applicant? Let's hear from the applicant. If you're here, if you could step up, give us your name and address, please, and just any comments that you have. We're, we're glad to see you expanding a bit and staying in town, most importantly.
Hi, I wasn't aware I would be speaking, but I'm really nervous, so please excuse that. Me and my husband started this business 14 years ago as a kiosk on Hollywood Boulevard, and we have expanded, and this will be our biggest store yet, so we are very excited. I designed everything myself. We've gone through the whole color spectrum, and we've always had the best success with the colors I chose. And we've been in our current location, 9 Bellinas, for three years now, and almost every single day, someone will come in and they'll say to us, "Oh, are you new? We've never seen you. We've never been here." So for me, it was really important, because we are moving down to the very end of the street, but at least we're gaining a beautiful storefront. So it was really important to utilize that. We will not be using the hanging side sign. And I, I'm really putting my heart and soul into this building. It is quite a remodel, and my family has invested into it, so they're really believing in me. And I feel like with your approval, it's really important for the success of our business that we're granted the colors and the signage, because it's, it's not an easy block to survive in, but, you know, slowly, the community has supported us, and Christmas is coming, which really is the only month out of the year that we have a chance to make some money. So I'm really hoping for approval tonight so we can move forward and be open for the holidays.
Well, I would just like to say that I'm delighted that you are expanding and staying in town one more time, and that I, I like your sign and I like your colors. You could hang your smaller sign inside, perhaps, but you're moving into a, historically, a very popular shop. I don't know if you, well, Sherman's was still open when you guys came to town, but historically, and the, the original Sherman's owners were very much came to town, but historically, and the, the original Sherman's owners were very much involved in the community, and I think you're picking up a lot of very good energy by moving in there, and hopefully that will bring you some good luck.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah. Do you still have the Hollywood Boulevard location?
No.
Do you have any other locations?
We have one other location in the city.
And is it the same color?
It's exactly the same. It's an identical replica, and it's only 369 square feet, so it's a really small store. But we've had much success with our branding, our coloring, so I hope it does well for us here.
Okay. And, and there are, the San Francisco location, and then this proposed location, and that's it?
That's it. I did a third pop-up shop, and that almost killed me, so this is as big as I plan on going.
I just wanted to make sure, the, the color of the side of the building is going to be white?
That's correct.
What color was it before, or what color is it now?
I would say it's, yeah.
Like a tannish?
There's a photograph that last...
Oh, okay.
The existing name is Inar Packett.
Okay.
With a greenish front and a tannish color.
Well, I like your sign.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a follow-up to Esther's. I'm a little concerned about the white on the side of the building. It looks very bright.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't know if you would consider, you know, wrapping the blue around the side of the building, or at least, you know, part, a portion of it. Do you have any thoughts about that?
I am very close to my one neighbor, Ron, and he's let us access his property, and it was quite a mission to get his approval. And we've already painted that one section white, because we replaced the siding. So I was hoping to just keep it a nice, clean look all the way around. We have the other side of the building. And I know in that picture, it kind of looks super exposed and white, but I think if you looked at it, the portion that we have repaired and painted white, it looks really nice and clean. So that was my desire.
Does, does the, does the facility in the city sell the same stuff as you plan to sell here in Fairfax?
It's exactly the same product. Once again, we only have, you know, a really small space, so we're, we're limited, and we're hoping to be able to sell other items now that we'll have more space. But currently, it's completely identical.
Okay. And are you and your husband a company of any kind?
It's, actually Bliss is a sole proprietor, but my husband is my best partner, and we have three employees. We work around the clock, 24/7. So we are in no way, shape, or form a franchise. I, I heard there might have been a rumor of that, but Bliss was started my parents 45 years ago in Santa Cruz as a small jewelry store, so we carried on their namesake, and we're about a small business.
So hence the diamond feature in the sign.
Yeah, that was actually my dad's first logo, so...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? No? Okay. This is a public hearing, so is there anyone else in the, in the public who has a comment on this? Thank you, thank you for your comments. You did really well.
Thank you so much.
John Fitzpatrick again. And Nicole and Oriya, they live in Fairfax. I don't know if you know that or not. They've been here for many years, so it's, it's so exciting to see that building being taken over by, especially by somebody who lives in Fairfax. And I, I know they're going to be great there, and I'm looking forward to the opening. And I think the sign looks great.
When will that opening be?
Opening for...
Okay, and in the meantime, you'll keep your other shop going? All right. I don't see any other public comments.
Before, before you close the public hearing, can I ask our historical downtown representative, Cassidy, to, could you tell me your thoughts about this sign?
Oh, I haven't seen the sign.
Have you seen the, the shop?
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, I have a, I have a daughter, so we go there.
It's the same, but much larger. The same as Sherman's sign, just in size and location.
Yeah, it's painted, but it's not, like, um... Yeah, I think it's painted, like the planning, or the director of planning said. So it's not lit up, and it's oriented in a place where typically you would find historic signage on the front of the building. Yeah.
It, it doesn't change the character of the architecture of the building?
No, it enhances it.
Thank you.
That raises a question. Maybe staff may know, or the applicant, how is the sign proposed to be lit?
There were no proposals.
Is this a light fixture in the corner, Linda, of the photograph?
I don't believe, I don't believe so.
Or is that something else that's just...
I think Sherman's General Store sign was not lit.
It's not going to be.
And it's not going to be lit.
For the record, the applicant's indicating that the sign will not be illuminated.
Well, the question is, being asked up here is, what is that element in the lower right-hand corner of the picture of the front of the building? Looks a little brown.
Along the white line above the transom windows? It looks like a big brown box that could be lighting, or who knows what.
But that's not a photograph. That's a...
Oh, are you referring to the right-hand corner there?
Yeah, the brown box.
If we look at the actual...
Okay.
Here, look at the, look at the photo that I took, my beautiful photography, which is the very last page of your staff report. It's some kind of a, what do you think that is, like an electrical box or something?
Electrical box.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No lighting is good. You get streetlights there. Let's close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for a motion, please.
Can we discuss it before we have a motion?
Go ahead.
One thing I'd like to say is, you know, looking at the picture in the, in the packet plans, I love it that the blue, the light blue of the building almost matches the sky, I mean, from, from across the street. That's, that's, and so your, your question of could the blue be wrapped around the building is pretty, is a good idea. I mean, I like the sign. The historical is approved. We don't have a formula business, and I think it's, it's going to be a great expansion for you.
I see no problem with the application. I'm, I'm fine with it.
I was initially concerned about the sign, frankly. I didn't think it looked, gave the sort of western downtown feel that I got from the general store, but having heard from Cassidy, I'm convinced.
Just to, just to be clear, I think it's, it's the, the words Bliss Fairfax are in white, and then sort of framing them is a, is a sort of an aluminum mirror outlining? Is that right? So that'll be a little glitzy compared to other signs downtown, won't it?
Um, it's, it's the sign, it's basically the same color on the sign that they have now down the street.
Right, but it's much smaller. It's, so there is a reflective aspect to this, is, right? I'm just trying to get a...
But this is 20 feet above, above street level.
So looking at the, looking at the drawing, I mean, the mirror aluminum composite, is that only in the star that's around the crystal?
I mean, it's a half an inch.
Yeah, I don't see any more mirrors.
The, the silver is like an eighth inch, so it's not like it's a, a wide width, but...
But it outlines the words Bliss Fairfax anyhow, right, is it?
And, and the outside of the sign and the curlicues.
Right, okay.
Am I right about that?
Yeah, it's just the border, and you see my sign online, it's, it's very minimal. It's not like a bright shiny object, but it does go all the way around.
Okay, I just want clarification. Thanks.
I initially had concerns about the size of the sign, and so that's why I asked for the supplemental information from Linda. And as long as it's not any larger than the, the Sherman's sign that was previously there, then I support the application.
I, I had similar concerns, but then I drove by there and saw the, the outline of what was there before, I think. And it, actually, I think the, the previous sign was bigger.
I think Sherman's...
Sherman's sign was actually longer.
Yeah, longer.
The same height, but longer.
Yeah. Yeah, but anyway, I, I support the, the signage.
I thought we were discussing.
All right. Ready for a motion? Are we ready for a motion?
I was ready.
Okay. I'd just like to make a motion to approve this application, 17-37, and let them get on with preparing for Thanksgiving holiday.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Congratulations. There is a 10-day appeal period, but who can appeal such a cute sign? Good luck. That's right. There is an appeal period, and is it $400 or $500?
$500.
$500 fee to the clerk for anyone who wanted to appeal our decision to approve your sign. Okido, good night. Thanks for staying in town. 22 Sequoia Road, application 17-38, use permit for parking variance. Linda?
Okay. The owners are proposing to construct a 300-square-foot studio office over the existing garage by increasing the slope of the roof. The, there would be, there's no expansion towards the neighboring structure that's closest to this property, and it complies with the, all the regulations for the zone it's in, which is the RS6 zone. It requires a conditional use permit, because the minimum parcel size in the RS6 zone is 6,000 square feet with a width of 60 feet, and the project site is only 5,022 square feet and 57 feet wide. The added square footage would not make the house out of character with the surrounding residential structures. Residences in the Fairfax Manor subdivision on similar-sized properties range in size from 1,011-square-foot two-bedroom, one-bathroom residences to a 1,920, 20-square-foot two-bedroom, one-bath resident on a 5,500-square-foot site. So it's in character with the surrounding development. The project also requires a parking variance for one of the parking stalls in the garage to be reduced to a compact stall. That's because the access stairway to the upper bedroom, bedroom, sorry, studio, it's not a bedroom, it would reach from the entryway up to the second floor, and it shortens the one side of the garage below the 9-by-19-foot requirement. It's not going to be quite as, it's not going to be quite, it's not going to be 8-by-16, which is what our compact stall size is, so it's going to be larger than a compact stall, but they are requesting that variance to reduce one side of the garage. We don't believe that this reduction is going to have any impact on the parking in the neighborhood, because they're not, they're not decreasing the number of available parking spaces, they're just making one smaller, and therefore, we're recommending that you adopt resolution number 1736, approving the application and setting forth the findings and conditions for the project approval. And I would point out that there was an error in the resolution that the chairman is Chairman Fregoso and not Chairman Kirline, so we've made that change and put the corrected page on the dais in front of you. Yeah.
Not hearing any. Should we bring the applicant?
Sorry, sidewalk.
We did include a condition, because it's, it's the standard requirement for the Public Works Department now to require, if there's room and there's no trees in the way, to improve the sidewalk along the property frontage. So that is a condition.
And with those, we use the county's standards?
Yep.
We don't have any different standards for that?
No. County sidewalk standards. And they can get, you know, if they have questions about that, they can contact our building department. They can give them the number of the standard.
I think that sidewalk improvement is a terrific condition. That's a really great thing.
To hear from the applicant? Is the applicant here? Would you like to step forward? Give us your name and address, and any comment that you have for us tonight? If you hit that...
Rolanda Ebert?
Hi, Eric.
No, no comments to make?
Yeah, I have one comment to make. About the sidewalk. We put in a coastal live oak over 30 years ago, and we have always been very respectful of the needs of that live oak. So everything we've done has been, the driveway is permeable to brick. Any patios, anything else around it has always been permeable. So last year, when we had Van Mitty re-brick our driveway, he put in a apron, which was necessary, and cut into the roots of that tree. The roots of that tree are very close to the surface. I'm assuming they are on the outside of the fence, because I know they are on the inside of the fence. So when we had the driveway re-bricked and the apron put in, the sidewalk went to the south, but not to the north, for that very reason. That tree has always had space around it to have water. It's already drought stressed, even after last year's rain. It's drought stressed. Bartlett trees told us that. And I would prefer to just keep it mulched so that it's not slippery when it's wet for people to slide in. But I don't think there's any way that they're going to put a dry, or a sidewalk in there without cutting into more roots and also blocking water.
You know, if, if that's a concern, then what you can do is you can word the condition that they can have an ISA-certified arborist review the situation, and if, if, if a sidewalk pushed to the edge of the curb line is going to some, a four...
to the edge of the curb line is going to some... A four-foot-wide sidewalk is somehow going to negatively impact that tree, the Public Works Department can waive that requirement. But there'd have to be something from an ISA-certified arborist stating that installation of a sidewalk right by the curb is going to somehow affect that tree.
Alternatively, with the arborist report, could they install a sidewalk up to the safest point and then...
We don't know what the safest point is unless we dig it up to see where the roots are.
An arborist could tell you.
All right.
If, with an arborist's report, could the sidewalk be required just to that safe point of the tree?
Well, I don't think there'd be any point because they're curb-cut. You know, if the arborist says that there's no way to install a public sidewalk to public standards without negatively impacting that tree, then I believe that I can convince the Public Works Department to waive that requirement. But there has to be some negative impact, you know, there has to be experts stating that it can't be done, right?
I believe it would be to your advantage to have an arborist take a look at that. It would be a lot less expensive than putting in a whole sidewalk, and it would give you the opportunity to go back to the Public Works Director, and they might be able to waive that new sidewalk requirement.
Okay, so what's the process? We have an arborist coming very soon, actually, to do a little bit of trimming, so I could talk to him about that.
Oh, if it's someone who's certified and licensed to do that, you could talk to staff. Let's wait and get through the process, and then you can talk to staff about how to move forward with that. To suggest something else, Ben?
Well, I was just simply pointing out that Commissioner Kirlin was at the Tree Committee meeting last week where Town Arborist Ray Moritz gave a very good presentation, and there continues to be evolving capabilities, for example, pervious concrete now, where they're doing some very interesting things with aggregates and the mixture and things like that, but there is potential for adverse impacts. A lot of it has to do with how they do the construction, but I would concur with Linda's request that we simply get that arborist's report, and I could see if I can loop Mr. Moritz into that conversation, too.
That would be wonderful, thank you. That way you know you'll get the right specialist to take a look at this particular issue for you. Did you have any other comments you wanted to make?
No, that was my concern.
Okay, let's see if anyone has questions for you.
I have a question, which is really a favor, that you tell Dennis Ludlow how much I enjoyed his drawings of this proposal. They were absolutely beautiful.
He's away, otherwise he'd be here.
Well, you see, you can sort of fight City Hall, and this is a democracy, so we'll look into the sidewalk issue and maybe come back.
No. We don't seem to have any other questions for you, thank you. Can you hit that red light for us? Okay, is there anyone from the public who wants to address this particular item? Not hearing any, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council's, to the commissioner's discussion.
I really was impressed and don't see... I personally didn't have any concerns with this.
Yeah, I just wish the picture showed that tree. I mean, of the four pictures, we don't really have a clear...
We don't really have a clear shot of the tree.
Okay, well.
Well, it's hard.
It doesn't show where it meets the sidewalk area, but if, you know, if there... My feeling is if we can get an arborist's report and give a little, perhaps Public Works can give a little on the sidewalk, or we can make some more modern materials available so the tree gets its water, that sounds like a good idea.
I agree with that. I like the proposal that Linda made that we just include that condition, that if the arborist does, if a certified arborist does say that it would not be possible to build a sidewalk, that the town could waive that requirement, and then that way we don't have to have a second hearing for it, so.
Could you turn that into a motion?
I could. And I'm thinking that it would be the last condition, maybe new condition 10, on the second-to-last page of the proposed resolution, to require that if the applicants wish to request a waiver of the requirement to install a sidewalk, that they obtain the report of a certified, ISI-certified arborist and provide that to the Public Works Department. Does that reflect the changes? And with that addition, I would move to adopt Resolution Number 1736 of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving a conditional use permit to allow a 300-square-foot second-story addition to the single-family residence at 22 Sequoia Road, application number 17-38.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Your motion carries, please speak to staff to get the arborist's name, and there is a 10-day appeal period. If someone has concerns, they could appeal our decision to the city clerk with a $500 fee, but why don't you get started when you get a chance and get your arborist out there and see what you can do about removing that condition? Yes, sir? Well, tomorrow they're closed, so Monday might be a better day. Thank you, have a good weekend.
Okay, so, Norma, I'm going to recuse myself for this item, and then I'm probably going to retire from the rest of the meeting. All right, thank you.
We do have minutes in the director's report, but you could retire. We'll be going over those items for quite some time. Commissioner Kirlin is recusing herself from this item because she is the architect on the project, and so she's appropriately removing herself from the discussion and this decision. Can we have the staff report, please, on 208 Ridgeway Avenue, application 17-29?
So the project consists of some modest additions to this structure. They're going to enclose a covered walkway and fill in an area under an overhanging area of living space, so they're not adding anything outside the footprint of the existing structure, and it complies with all the regulations for the... All the setback regulations, lot coverage, floor area ratio and height regulations for the RD 5.5-7 zone. It's before you because it is on a slope and the parcel doesn't meet the minimum size and width requirement, so it requires a conditional use permit. The residences in the neighborhood, the resulting square footage of this house, if the additions are approved, will not be out of keeping with the character of the surrounding homes. It's not going to be an excessively large house. The only issue we had, and we've discussed it with the applicants, and they've agreed to redesign the back deck because they were kind of doing this combination of deck and patio, and we were unable to make findings for a deck that's basically on-grade to extend in the combined side yard setback when you can enjoy that area with a patio. So they've agreed to redesign it so that it does not require a setback variance from the commission, and they'll submit those revised plans to the Building Department. Pretty easy to do. The only other issue with this property is that because this property and the two behind it, one undeveloped and one with the house at whatever the address is, what did I say it was? Well, it's known as 20 Sadie Lane, but it's also 208A Ridgeway. It was owned by one family, and so there are improvements that cross property lines. There's some retaining walls that cross property lines, there's a storage shed that's used by the front house at 208, but it's on another property, and the driveway for the 208A property runs along one side of the house. So we are recommending a condition to clean that situation up in case the properties change hands in the future. We've added a condition that they create easements before we issue the building permit, and so we're recommending that you approve the project based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in attached Resolution 1737.
And we have a letter from the neighbors allowing the easement, so that is in order...
Indicating their willingness to enter into the easement.
To enter into a formal legal easement.
Now, I looked and looked for Sadie Lane, and I just, there isn't one, is there, really? It's a...
You can actually... It's a path, but it gets pretty steep at the bottom, so you can walk on it, but you might slide the last few feet, it's pretty steep.
Well, let's just say it's not on Google Maps, and so...
No.
So can you just kind of show where that is on this back page?
So did you go into the backyard? So I believe that Sadie Lane goes down... Sadie Lane, let's see, where's our north arrow? Of course, now we don't have my glasses. Where's their north arrow? They don't have it. Okay, this is easier to tell from this one. So I believe that Sadie Lane runs this way, and it actually runs down to, I want to say, Roca. So it connects up with the neighborhood that... Yeah, it's Roca. Roca by the Barefoot Cafe, and it winds around, so it comes down the hillside.
Okay, and you're indicating on the file, the stamped file plans...
You walked down, if you walk down the pathway that comes alongside the house, you have to walk down past this house, and Sadie Lane runs, it's behind the Brothers' House at 208A, and it runs down the hill. So it's like on the, kind of on the other side of the ridge? And on our file, we call it 208A. I think people, that may have been an address when people would hike up, hike there, walk there, but the fire department doesn't use that address, we don't use that address, the police don't use that address. It's kind of like an old, kind of hanger-on from maybe when people didn't have cars, right? Yeah.
Right, historical address. Okay, thank you, thank you, that was really confusing.
Any other questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Not hearing any. Actually, we should ask the applicant first to step forward, make any comments, please. State your name.
Hi, my name is Mary Wells, family name Pincini. I am the owner of 208 Ridgeway Avenue, and thank you for reviewing my project to repair and remodel this home, which is my family home where I grew up. I attended Deer Park School, Oak Manor School, Central School, and White Hill School, the latter of which I actually named in a contest. While I've lived in Humboldt County for more than 35 years, I always intended to move back to Fairfax, I always considered it my home, and I'm fortunate to be in this position now, as 208 Ridgeway will become my permanent residence. In its glory days, the home is said to have been visited by celebrities at gatherings of Italian Gaetano Marola, the founder of the San Francisco Opera in the 1930s. My parents purchased the home and the vacant lot behind it in 1955. My parents were simple people, they worked hard and were frugal, saving money to purchase the two other contiguous properties behind and below 208 Ridgeway, where they lived until their deaths in 2004 and 2013, after which time the four parcels were divided among their three children. Thank you for your consideration, and Mr. Frederick Devine here, representing the architect, has some comments?
Thank you, Ms. Wells.
Sadie Lane is in fact a footpath, and it used to traverse over the top of the hill from Roca to the other side, but slip and slide, yeah.
So I'm standing in for the architect, Fred Devine, I'm an architect, and the staff report's excellent, this is a very straightforward project. The thing that's unique about it is the situation with one family having all these properties for all these years and keeping them. It's real simple, there's a couple little small additions on the back, the foundation is being repaired, and that's part of what triggered the whole thing, and because of that, some ceiling heights are being improved below, which is a part of the approval because it's an improvement to a non-conforming structure. But it's those two little additions at the back, and then the inclusion of the area under the porch to expand the kitchen. Very straightforward. Were available for questions if you have any, but...
Thank you, Mr. Devine.
Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant or the architect? Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this project? Ma'am, not you? Okay, we'll close the public hearing then and bring it back for discussion with the commission.
Well, I think the project is terrific. It's very simple addition, it makes a lot of sense, it includes a repair of the foundation, which is always a good thing in our earthquake-prone area, and they've agreed to redo the back deck as requested by staff, so I have no issues with this.
And it brings a historic property owner back to Fairfax, thank you, I'm glad to hear that. Are we ready to make a motion here? Esther, would you?
Okay, I move to approve. Use permit application number 17-39. Right. As presented, it's an additional, or an addition remodel of a single-family residence. I can't find the resolution.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. The motion carries, your project is approved, there is, of course, that 10-day appeal period we're required to notify you of with a $500 application fee, but we're very happy with the improvements you're making and glad to have you back in town, thank you. town. Thank you.
Could I add a quick sidebar, because I know you're continuing? I really, as somebody that doesn't hear, appreciate these. But I think somebody forgot to charge the batteries, because it sort of started for a while, and then it just went away. And it really helps.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
I'm just making that little comment so that maybe
Isle alert, Public Works. Thank you for letting us know.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a good night. We have a hefty discussion with the planning director. Can we take a quick break before that, please? Mr. Ben, you have a matrix for us to review.
Yes, and I would like to give full credit to Linda and Michelle for their assistance on this. It was truly a group effort. And what you see is, is kind of a compendium of comments and notes. You know, when I first came to work for the town, I looked at the general plan, and I said, wow, this is a good document. You know, and I was looking at the, the committees that worked on it and things like that, and Jim, Jim did himself proud. And so it's, it's, it's nice to be able to come in on the coattails of that. And although, looking at 319, yeah, there's, there's some work to be done. As we know, the, the general plan is the, not only the constitution for development, but it's a kind of a compendium of the hopes and aspirations of the community. It's been put together by numerous people over numerous years, and I believe this was almost a decade-long effort, maybe longer than that.
Twelve years.
Twelve years, so over a decade. And as such, you know, there are certain elements that tend to be wish lists. But in all, what, what you're looking at are the things that people who truly have the community's best interest in mind have spent a lot of hours in careful thought and assembling. And so it's certainly acknowledged and respected as such. That being said, there's an awful lot there. And the first thing we did with the implementation program matrix that the general plan implementation committee and Bruce and Laura, no
Diane.
Diane, excuse me, Diane Cozy put together, was to garner out the ones that were directly relevant to the, the planning commission and planning and building staff. And so we whittled it down to only 319 items. We also did a little bit of matrix spreadsheet editing, just for clarity's sake. There was one column originally called hugeness, which was very nice, but
Hugeness.
We changed that to resources required. I think we, hopefully we didn't
[laughter]
Miss the implications. What, what we realized when we were going over this is that there's no way that this commission is going to be able to really dive into this, you know, at quarter to ten at night after you've been spending your energy and thinking on regular applications. And this ties in directly to the planning commission workshop, is that this is an obvious item that probably would be first and foremost in that workshop. And so that, that would be something that we would heartily recommend, rather than trying to kind of do it piecemeal at the end of planning commission meetings or forcing applicants to wait for an hour or two at the beginning of the planning commission meetings. In addition to the planning commission, or the general plan implementation programs that were outlined, we also had the list of planning commission zoning amendments. And of course, there's, it's different because it is zoning ordinance versus general plan. When you look at the zoning ordinance, a lot of these are cleanup items. So there isn't necessarily a direct correlation. There are some, when they're talking about tree ordinances or accessory dwelling units and things like that, certainly. But a lot of this is kind of like a more fine-grained approach towards things that staff, commission and staff have noticed could or should be amended somehow, or at least discussed in, you know, do we really want to keep on doing, for example, covered parking? That was on the list, surprise, surprising. You know, here we have that same topic coming up. And this is what happens, of course, when you're dealing with real-world applications, is all of a sudden it goes from the conceptual to the, the reality of people with their private development proposals. And what makes a difference in how those are proposed and reviewed by staff and the commission? So I'll loop back to, to that discussion. The, so the first is, yeah, a workshop. The second is that we will need to probably prioritize that, that staff's recommendation. That's not to say that we won't get to the ones that are lowest on the priority list, but simply that, recognizing that there's limited resources, that we need to decide which ones are the highest priority. And the general plan is referred to as a living, breathing document. Sometimes people scoff at that because, you know, you look at these thick tomes that you could use to, you know, as door, doorstops. But on the other hand, when you get right down to it, you know, you have somebody from the public who, you know, has enthusiasm, energy, knowledge, and they're saying, hey, I want, I'd like to come forward with something to deal with historic preservation. And, you know, she's tied into somebody in the commission, somebody in the know. And, you know, you have that initiative ready and that, that ability to move forward in certain areas. And so that's the beauty of this, is that, you know, this isn't just something that's just kind of unrelated to anything else, that there's been a, you know, a page on this document, more than a pages of discussion. So when we get into the prioritization, we can start to weigh factors as far as what would be higher priorities and lower priorities. Another example is there's several pages on hazard mitigation and fire safety. And of course, you know, I noticed commissioners and other people in the audience, when the rain would pitter-patter on the roof, you know, just kind of look up and, you know, thank you, God. I mean, just amazing to get our first rainfall this season. But that issue is never going to go away. And certainly with the trends towards climate change, you know, it's, this isn't just dusty stuff. This is things where we're aware that there are people in the town who are very interested in moving forward. And we've had comments from commissioners. I've had conversations with people on the town council. And this is, you know, potentially life and death issues. So when we have that discussion, you know, this is something that isn't just what's in the general plan, but what's current in people's minds and desires for attention be paid to it. There's, always comes to the, you know, the question of funding and staff resources. And as we all know, the town is very fine-grained in terms of what projects require discretionary applications, and indeed require applications that go to the planning commission for review. And so, you know, I feel very confident in saying that staff is working full-time and very efficiently and effectively at that, pretty much in just processing current applications, current planning applications. So trying to allocate resources to tackle some of these larger-scale tasks as envisioned in the general plan is going to be real challenging, and we can discuss that. This also ties into the town council's role, certainly in setting budgets and priorities for planning-related work. Planning items are, are central in many ways to what the town does or doesn't do and focuses on. And so the town council obviously is the final decision-maker on things like budget items and indeed where work efforts will, will proceed. So that's another consideration, is, is bringing the town council into the loop. In terms of staff resources, one of the questions, and this actually is another carryover or a cross-correlation between the, the zoning amendments and the planning commission's work items and considerations, is to what extent are there applications that don't necessarily require the full attention of the planning commission, that are minor enough, routine enough that staff could probably address those, independent of the commission, with appropriate public notification and safeguards to make sure that we get it right? Well, yes, and we'll, yeah, we'll be coming up on that. You know, there's other things that discretion is being taken away from us as we speak. And then finally, we've noted that some of the implementation items have been completed. Others would seem to be relegated to lower priority. I'm not going to get into a detailed discussion tonight about that, but, you know, these are the things that keep moving forward since the adoption of the general plan. And then even things that are related to staff, planning and building staff in the planning commission, you're looking at it going, well, the fire stuff, for example, we have FireSafe Marin. Todd Lando is, is working hard in that process. And obviously, those professionals are going to be front and center in any discussions that relate to fire safety. So to the extent that, you know, it's assigned as a planning commission item, and there's going to be input from everybody, because we're talking about things that, you know, affect the entire community and is part of what the planning commission and the town council's charge are. But at the same time, a lot of this is kind of saying, well, what are other people doing? Are there ways that the town and the planning commission and staff can participate and facilitate in that, and certainly bring the awareness of what's going on to everyone's attention? So that's another element. And the final thing is, is that looking at some of these zoning implementation items, even though I guess you could, would consider this relatively small, low-hanging fruit, consideration could be made to try to get some of those things done. It doesn't take a lot of staff resources. If there appears to be a consensus in the commission with recommendations to the town council, get their feedback, that could be something that we could probably knock off a number of those items relatively quickly. And if it's cleanup items and things like that, get those amended in the zoning code so that that continues to work as, as effectively and efficiently for us as possible. And with that, I'm happy to get the commission's feedback.
Just one, I'm sorry, just one question for you. This is a comprehensive list. I turned it off, didn't I? This is a comprehensive list, not in any order of priority. We would do the prioritizing after we have an opportunity to review these.
Correct.
Okay.
So on your comments section on here, there's a couple of these that just have an "N" for comment.
Right.
Can you tell me what an "N" means?
I think we picked that up from the general plan implementation committee. I'm just, I'm looking for an "N" just so I can
I have no idea what that is.
Yeah, I think that was, that was something that we took forward from the matrix that we received.
I think it's an error.
Or it could be, it could be, we're not sure, but we'll find out.
Like page 25.
Bruce, now?
Bruce, do you know what the "N" means?
Page 20. When I came onto the planning commission, I had to resign the general plan implementation committee. And at that time, Diane Cozy, who remained on the G-PIC, was going through a process of electronically changing the format of this, of this matrix. So the matrix, as we construed it at the end of the general plan process, was a spreadsheet with columns, more or less as you see, but, but we worked together for a while, and then Diane finished the work of reorganizing these columns that are to the right here to make them more useful. And Diane actually even made it to where the spreadsheet was kind of semi-automated to where, and, and that's, that's a point, a general point I should make. My, my short answer is I don't know what "N" means, because that was, that was before I, that was after I last saw this.
Thanks, Bruce.
So I don't know. I guess I'll, I'll also comment, though, that, that it was, it's interesting that we're looking at this on paper, because it, it, it is an electronic document, and, and it can be reshuffled, and, you know, you can filter it in different ways and so forth. So that's just something to, as a general comment, that the kind of the original reason for creating this matrix out of the general plan was to be able to facilitate the work that G-PIC originally had to do of, well, we have this daunting task, how are we going to even figure out who should be notified about these different programs, or how we prioritize them, or what's the program for one year, the next year? You know, there's so many different ways to slice and dice it. So we thought, trying to find some electronic tools to be able to do that
Yeah.
Was, so just as a general comment, it's, it's interesting to, to me, to, to think about the number of electronic tools I use in my daily life, and then how, in the world of government, it's often flattened to, to, to a document, because that's what we, because of, you know, requirements of notification and printing and putting it online, and the public not needing, not needing to have certain electronic tools in order to access it. I mean, I totally understand that, but it's kind of an interesting move in the world.
So the comments on here, then, aren't
Staff's.
Staff's comments. The comments came from the
From, from G-PIC, basically. Yeah, yeah.
And actually, some of these items, excuse me, some of these items have been discussed to some extent.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to get a little specific on fire safety. When I first moved into our neighborhood here in Fairfax back in 86 or so, we had a fire captain come to a house, and everybody got lots of notice, and the house was packed. And the idea was to take, like, this particular neighborhood and say what we can do. So for example, the, the fire captain made it clear that the police would not ticket you if your car was facing down the road, because it's a dead-end road, no matter what side of the road you were parked on. So the really practical safety aspects for evacuation, for example. And today, just so happens, I was at a luncheon with, with the Marin County Bar Association Real Estate Attorneys Committee, and we were discussing what happened in Santa Rosa. And it's sort of, you know, a given that it's inevitable to happen here. I don't think it's inevitable, but in any case, I would like to specifically request that, and I'll be glad to help look into this if you want, if you don't have staff time. Having fire department staff go to neighborhoods, well, first they'll have to kind of analyze each neighborhood area and kind of get into a meeting with the public in that neighborhood to specify, you know, what that neighborhood can do itself to, for example, cleaning areas around your house, or way to park, or something like that, to give some really practical advice for prevention and evacuation and coordination. Because you can have a real traffic tie-up, for example, if people are evacuating. So I, I would really like to push for that, and I'm saying I'm volunteer, to help staff tell me if you need help putting this together. We have firefighters living on our street, so I'm, I'm, you know, fairly familiar with some of these guys. And they are the best people in the world. They're putting their lives at stake to save us, you know? So I, I would really like to get something going on that sooner than later of all these issues. I think, you know, the Santa Rosa fire brings that to a fore here. Rain is only temporary. Winter only lasts a few months, and we're going to be dry again. So kind of before we are, it might be good to address this. And that's kind of my big push tonight.
But I think neighborhoods can do that on their own now. We have FireSafe Marin. We've got a neighborhood in the Cascades that's trying to go through the process to be a fire-wise neighborhood. You, as on your street or with your neighbors, can come together and start doing that and contacting the fire department and make an appointment for them to come out and either walk your street with, you know, all the neighbors and look at defensible space and things like that, or have, you know, kind of a short get-ready class for, for the neighbors. So those kinds of things can be done right now on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis.
Right, it's just that they don't necessarily do those things. I mean, maybe they could. I don't know if, if so many neighborhoods are even cognizant of it. But certainly having the fire, you know, personnel there is a focal point. And if, yeah, if a neighborhood, if a neighborhood could get that together, that's great. I think what we need to do is if a neighborhood could get that together, that's great. I think what we need to do is, as a commission, is sort of help foster that somehow, point it out to neighborhoods. You know, if you're seeing all this on TV, you know, be aware of this, that it can be organized. They're very willing to do it. The fire department is very willing to come out and, but every neighborhood has its own particular issues, on hillside especially. And so we, you know, it's, it's a great idea to just follow through. And anything I can do volunteer-wise to help do that, let me know.
Uh, I agree with both of you. And the Cascade neighborhood does have its own um, analysis that was done. And I've received a copy of that. Have you seen that?
No.
I'll send it to you because there's a lot of very good generic information that one can glean living in Fairfax. Obviously Cascade has its own issues, but uh, I, staff, do you have that report from Firewise?
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, maybe we could do something at a council or a commission meeting, a workshop, uh, at, at the beginning of a meeting sometime where we could bring uh, some fire guys in with some generic information that can be applied to all neighborhoods. Also, uh, Bioneers is doing something special for a couple of days during their conference, which begins, is it this weekend or next? I don't recall. I think it's this, is it next weekend?
No, this is.
This weekend, that's what I thought. And they are having afternoon sessions that are free to the public and you don't have to register. You can just show up and they're talking about the Santa Rosa fires and uh, what happened and some logistics and problems and things that they've run into, what they've learned. So I will send you that as well. And uh, that's an absolute freebie. And uh, also resilient neighborhoods, are you guys all familiar with the resilient neighborhoods? They have a fantastic uh, emergency component to the resilient neighborhoods. Basically, it, you know, it's a, an effort to reduce uh, household carbon emissions and, you know, to change shopping patterns. But there's an emergency component where they walk you through and they give you pointers on how to organize a community meeting for emergencies and getting each other's numbers and providing information. Those are wonderful programs that we should, could and should encourage people to participate in. We could maybe get a presentation uh, from them to come to one of our meetings. I'm sure they would be willing to. Um, but yes, uh, fire, fire safety, a very important issue.
So going back to these items and steps, the next steps on this, I, because I think one of the things that I would like to take a stab at for, for myself and maybe everybody would, is to come up with our, you know, you, you mentioned prioritization and maybe taking a stab from everybody's perspective of what our priorities are and then maybe taking that to a workshop and, and going kind of down that path once we've all had a chance to do our own.
Yeah, we, we actually divided this up and we're kind of coming up with our own ideas, but we thought, you know, that's just sort of, again, we were sort of doing the same thing. So I, I, I agree with that. And, and actually, the one thing I didn't say was, uh, as preparation for the planning commission's workshop, possibly appointing a subcommittee of, say, two members to assist staff with work in that regard. So that could be focused in part on maybe compiling commissioners' priorities and, and trying to get a sense in preparation to try to, when we get together with the entire commission, to make that time as efficient as possible.
Um, so have you, when you, uh, when you say that your staff is in the process of something, you're referring to um, sort of going through this list and I guess I would envision categorizing them like a lot of them. We just talked about fire safety. A number of the things in here relate to fire safety. So put all them in one bucket. And so that's the fire safety bucket. And then another bucket is the, all the things that refer to historical designations and historical inventories, which all kind of happen in a sequence. So there's first the inventories and then there's think about what the designation might look like and prepare that. And so there's a sequence to that, but that's all within one bucket. So each one of, so I've, and that's a substantial exercise. So I'm wondering, is that the exercise that you're, that staff is kind of in the midst of now to be able to, because as we look at this, you know, numbers one through three hundred and something, it's indigestible at this point. And, but if it's categorized into some categories, then those are the categories that we could then think, okay, which categories are priorities? Oh, fire safety is a really big priority. Let's put that up. And who would work on it? Well, here's how we would approach the fire safety issues.
We probably haven't gotten to a, an actual rubric or organizational structure for how we, we would break this down and, and parcel it out. Suffice to say that the idea would be that within the higher priority general categories, we would look at what those recommendations were and then try to see, how do we assign resources to that? I mean, when you look at the general prioritization work that occurs, you know, you're obviously saying, well, here's what we can do in the next year, three years, five years. And here's what we think are the highest priorities. And so then you start to tackle those tasks. But I mean, that, I'm sure with the brain power present on this commission, we can come up with a very uh, suitable way to approach these broader categories and then individual categories and, uh, you know, individual work items.
We would need coffee, however.
And, and pizza. You know, um, I would, I would like to volunteer to be one of the two subcommittee members. Um, I'm just really into the ordinance stuff, guys. I just, I like the projects as well, but I, I would like to volunteer to be one of those. I was on the G-PIC as well with Bruce. And in fact, the work that he did, turning that make matrix that was on paper originally into a searchable, filterable, electronic item is a, it was brilliant. And, and I just commend him for that. Um, so that shouldn't.
He should be the other committee member.
That, that's, well, I'm not gonna, I can't, I can't say that because these guys are running for, these guys are running for office. We may be missing two commissioners.
But the prioritization is something that, where we.
Anyway, I'd, I'd love to be one of those subcommittee members. So just, you know, make a note of that.
But the idea would be that we would all do our own prioritization and then give it to the subcommittee to?
Yes, to sort, to sort it out.
To put it together.
Right. Yeah, insofar as we will likely have at least one and probably two commission meetings prior to any workshop, um, you know, there may be opportunity for a status report. So rather than, you know, really rolling up our sleeves and trying to make a lot of progress, just kind of letting the commission know and, and getting some feedback from the commission, sort of touching bases there.
So do you want to give us a suspense for when you want those priorities?
Uh, well, if, if you can get it to staff in, say, the next two weeks, we could probably have something to report out to the planning commission for the next meeting, for example, as a way to move some of these along. Um, again, what I'd really like to do is have that subcommittee because then we could, you know, just bring those folks in and spend two or three hours just looking at that. Um, and so.
But could I ask Bruce a question? Because I think what you just said made sense to me. I think what I heard you say is that these are like in, in, in increasing number of the different um, elements of the general plan. But what you're saying is there are dispersed throughout the different elements, similar tasks. And you think it would be easier to review if all the fire safe, all the ones that were the same category, even if the numbers, even if they're from different elements, were grouped together, you could see what the ultimate task, you know, what the fire, what you have to do to actually do the fire safe.
Right. That was, yeah, this, uh, if you sort this spreadsheet by column one or column A, uh, the, the one, column on the left, which says number, that's the number that it is if you read through the general plan. That's just so at any given point after you fiddle around with it, you can just sort it and it'll come back to its sort of resting state. But that's not the easiest way to read it. And that's.
Another reason to have him on that subcommittee.
Well, I can tell you everything I know in about twenty minutes and then you're done. You don't need me anymore.
You can't do anything in twenty minutes.
No, but you're right. It took me ten to say I don't know what the N means. So you're right. You're right. But the, um, the, for example, LU, I was mentioning earlier some of the things about the, the historic inventory. So LU nine point one point one point one and, um, which is land use element, and then conservation element, eight point one point one point one are virtually the same thing. They both say inventory are historic and cultural resources. And that's because that's the way the general plan works. Each element is sort of a narrative that you can read by itself, but each element is supposed to be consistent. And so.
If we group them that way, it will go down from the three hundred and whatever.
It's actually not as.
If you, yeah, if you take out the redundancies.
It's not as much as it looks like.
So that's what we envisioned doing on the G-PIC. And I have to say it was, you know, it's a daunting task, especially when you're a committee, because it becomes something like the squared of the, how daunting it was when you start with. But it, it's, that was what we always envisioned, was we would, you know, we would knock out the duplicates and we would categorize them and it would start to look a whole lot less. That's, that's the essential thing is this is not, it's pretty darn daunting, but it's not as daunting as it looks when you look at this. It's like, where do I begin? But that's because it's not even in order, you know? So, um, that would seem like if we categorized it in some way, which is something that, you know, it just takes.
That was your ultimate plan.
It's takes, yeah, and it takes some, somebody focusing on it. And I would, I would agree that a subcommittee is the way to do it because it's the kind of intellectual task that you can, the brain can process, but the brain has to first get all the stuff in there. You know, you can't just do it on paper. You have to stare at it long enough to where you really grok the whole thing. And then you, you know, sleep on it and then you wake up and it's like, aha, I see how it would work. Something like that. But, you know, it's, it requires, you know, a sort of sustained effort by a consistent number of people over a short enough time that you don't forget everything that you've learned. You know, you kind of get it all in your head and then figure out how to structure it. But that's what, that's what we've envisioned. That's what I would still envision doing with this. And that was the reason that it was put into a spreadsheet. That was the original idea of taking the whole thing, putting it into a spreadsheet, so you could play with it like that.
I also want to add that I too was on the general plan, uh, not only the general plan implementation committee, but the, whatever the one was where we actually assigned.
The advisory committee, yeah.
Right. We assigned who was responsible. And I just want to point out that if we didn't know, we wrote planning department.
Thank you for admitting that. I appreciate hearing that. What was wrong with that?
Well, it just, some people don't really see.
Well, you know, maybe that's the, the conceit too, is that somewhere in the information compendium, we feel like we're in the loop and all this stuff. You know, the, the actual professionals and the specialists resent this mightily. But, you know, when it comes to things like fire safety, it's, at some point, the planning commission will be involved. So, yeah, it's, it's a good default. Other comments, questions?
This, this in itself is a really nice piece of work and a great way to, I mean, we have everything we need to dive in.
We have everything we need to dive in.
So the question would be, does the commission want to appoint a subcommittee tonight? And what do we do if a member or two of the subcommittee end up getting kicked upstairs? I mean.
My thought is that if Phil is really eager to move forward, he's perfectly welcome to do whatever he wants on this without being on a subcommittee or whatever first. If we all commit to spend the next two weeks doing homework, self-assigned, each of us, not just, you know, and let Laura know, she's got an assignment too, um, we could get the information to staff in advance of our next planning commission meeting. And at that point, we will know whether we're going to be a couple planning commissioners short or not.
The, one question I had was, I mean, there's, there's a lot here already, but if someone has an idea to add, um, is it, is it forbidden? Is, I mean, I don't know it's daunting, more daunting, but I mean, I had, some, some of these things triggered other ideas.
If it's a good idea.
We can amend the general plan up to four times a year as well. So Phil, please bring your brilliant thoughts into the sunlight.
Do you guys have this electronically?
Yes.
Could you send all this to us?
Absolutely.
Didn't you send it to us electronically already?
Well, I mean.
Isn't it on the town, town website?
Didn't it come with the?
Yes, it is. It's on the town website.
Didn't it come with the director's staff report?
Well, but it wasn't one you could manipulate or write.
That was a.
Oh, it was a PDF?
That was a PDF.
Okay.
So there's the general plan itself, which is a great big PDF that you just read from cover to cover. And so that is itself a structure. So of course, all these numbers, every one of these, like when you look at on page twenty-five here, CON three point one point one point three, CON means it's a conservation element. There are eight elements. And then three is the third of the major goals. So we, the conservation element has some major goals. And then within that, there's, et cetera, et cetera.
Is everyone from, is everyone here, we're all familiar with our general plan, right?
So that's a, that's a structure that you.
So we know the elements.
Yeah, that's a structure that you see when you sort it by number. But then, you know, because there's duplication, there's stuff to be taken out of there. But.
We'll work hard on winnowing down the duplicates. That, in fact, there are some of them, we were kind of putting little question marks, like, you know, we're saying same policy. I, I actually need to loop, or we need to loop back to the general plan and say, why do we have two different implementing programs that basically say the same thing? Obviously they're not, but we'll need to.
They're from different locations.
Well, yeah, I mean, the reason they're in there is because under this goal, you have to do three things. And under this other goal over here, you have to do three things. And if those, if one of those things is the same in those two, then they need to be in both elements. And so that's, that's why you end up with the duplicates. At least that was the way.
I mean, I think if we get it in a format, you know, we, spreadsheet, the way it is, that's fine.
Okay. We'll send it to you next week.
That will be our homework. Um, should we talk about the revised dates for the next two month planning commission meetings?
Yes, if, moving on to other planning.
If.
Yes, the, um, well, certainly for the December meeting, um, is that this puts it right up against Christmas. And so the idea would be, assuming that there is going to be a December meeting, move that to the fourteenth, um, which is the second Thursday. And that is available. And so if you, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but if you could check your calendars and, and let me know your availability, if people aren't here and we can't get a quorum, or if we don't have items, you know, sometimes we take a break near the, near the Christmas holiday, but.
Never been here.
Took a break. But let's wish for thinking.
Yeah. So that would be the first. And then the second is that preliminarily, we're looking at sometime in mid-January for the workshop, planning commissioners retreat. So if you could also, uh, look at your schedules and find out if you have any hard, um, conflicts, vacations or something else.
For that, we're talking about a Saturday?
Correct. Yeah, taking a, a Saturday, a full Saturday and just kind of rolling up our sleeves on items, such as what we already discussed tonight. So those, those are the two things. Um, just to bring you up to date on goings on, the town council, as you're probably aware, um, has already done their first reading on the accessory dwelling unit ordinance and the electric vehicle charging station ordinance. Um, there's ample information on the plant, on the town council's website and their agenda, for example, for the accessory dwelling unit, which is very interesting because in some, well, it basically reduce, it eliminates discretionary review. well, it basically reduce, it eliminates discretionary review and reduces or eliminates local zoning requirements in several areas. For example, as already mentioned tonight, if you're within a half mile of a bus line, you don't have to put in parking. So those are definitely of interest. It means that the planning commission will probably not be looking at accessory dwelling unit applications per se, unless there's some other discretionary application that it triggers. For example, if it goes beyond the reduced setbacks that the state statute allows. The electric vehicle charging station is very straightforward. They're simply trying to facilitate the provision the state was. Fairfax is already very supportive. They're springing up all over town. We're looking at submittal requirements that are very streamlined. Michelle is working on a committee, a countywide committee, that's trying to come up with a checklist of submittal requirements that frankly is a lot cleaner and more straightforward than the supposed streamlining checklist that the state provided. And so we expect that once we have that, that will be posted online along with what the application form is. But our main concern really is that we make sure that when people are putting these in at the front of their property, which they typically do because that's where their vehicles are parked, that we don't approve something that might obstruct sidewalks or encroaching into the public right of way unless we're aware of that and, you know, the appropriate encroachment permit is applied. So those are those two items. And the town council will be considering some Proposition 64, the adult use of marijuana related regulations very shortly at their upcoming meeting. And the state recently passed Senate Bill 35, which potentially eliminates local discretionary review for multifamily projects. And so the planning commission will likely be tackling potential amendments to our zoning code to try to protect Fairfax's interests in situations where we feel this could potentially affect projects in our town. And that's it.
I had a question for you. You mentioned that you're updating the maps.
Yes.
Okay. Is it possible, as we update those, like a zoning map, where we can have the streets identified, at least that border zones or something like that? The maps are always so hard to figure out the locations of things on the maps. Are there ways to do that?
Yes. One of the challenges has to do with scale. It's like those old Roberts County maps where, you know, they break it up into blocks so you can actually see block by block what the name of the streets are. They do list street names in most instances, and in fact, that was something when I was working with Ashan Kennings. In some instances, they would have like four names of the same street, just block after block, and that was because of the way the overlays on that GIS, those GIS files stacked together. And so we're trying to clean up that street naming. And actually, I'm also going to be talking to the county GIS people next week, and one of the thoughts I had was to get cleaner street identification as part of the electronic products that we put together and have available. So I agree with you, frankly, some of the things in the general plan, the open space, what do we look at? Some of the ones are very difficult to correlate to anything, because, you know, maybe they're showing ridge lines, they're not showing streets, they're not showing city boundaries. You know, even the scale sometimes is questionable, and you're like, how do you line that up and say that this does or doesn't apply to certain properties? So I would like to get that cleaned up and as accurate as possible in an electronic format, so aware of that challenge. And we actually have a draft of the updated zoning map, and we're going to be getting back to Ashan very quickly to get something that reflects to the extent, best extent we can, what we accurately have as zoning right now. So you should see that changing very shortly at Town Hall.
That would be zoning that's reflective, not necessarily of.
It's current zoning. It's what the zoning ordinance is right now, so what the council has formally designated as zoning.
Okay, that's where I was getting to.
And that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing us up to date there.
Sure, I don't know, is there a draft of the charging stations proposed ordinance that, online, is it?
Yes. Yes, in fact, it's already been through the first reading, so at the November town council, they'll formally adopt that.
Okay.
It's anticipated that they'll adopt.
I'm all for that. You know what, it's funny, we had a cousin out here who's from Sweden, and he, he said what they did to encourage charging stations was, the parking lots would charge for every other parking lot, for every other parking space except electric. Those were free. So, and then now they have a proliferation of electric charging stations in parking lots.
Do we want to, are we continuing? Win this discussion, or should we move to the minutes?
Are we at number eight yet?
And we also have the comments, commissioner comments, is that the number eight you're referring to, Cindy? We couldn't certainly do that now.
Okay, I'll start. General plan has maps in it, so it's got like the WUWE zone, and it's got earthquake maps and things like that. But they're the maps that were in place when that was approved. So do we look at, because some of those, you know, when you look at the safety element and you've got, you know, fire zones, you know, the fire, like high fire danger and WUWE zones and things like that, do we ever look for any of those, the earthquake, the flooding, the fire, to update those so that somewhere we have something that's current for us in the community versus being only able to go back to what's in the general plan when the general plan was approved?
Funny you should mention that, because Linda and I had cause, had reason to be looking specifically at our flood maps, digital flood maps, and at the WUWE maps. And so this is something where, yeah, ideally, you'd be able to just click layers and, you know, just have, have, see exactly what your constraints are. Certainly when we're looking at upcoming development proposals involving, involving large tracts of land, we'll be looking at things like slope stability and stuff like that. But the idea is, yes, we are looking at that. We do recognize that some of those older documents are almost like historic documents. And so to the extent that we can get something that breaks it out by parcel, very useful in terms of flood zone.
Because what you're asking is, you're asking if the town has any plans to actually perform up studies of these maps and to try to see if they need to be changed?
Yes.
That's what you're asking?
So, so if we've got, well, if we've got, someplace there's, let me, someplace there's an, you know, a current map of the WUWE zone, or the fires, you know, what's high fire danger. Somewhere out there, there's a map that reflects that. So I'm just looking that we should have those available and accurate, because some of that applies to when you see some of these state bills that we get, and they talk about, you know, doing things, but maybe you don't have to do them if it's in a high fire danger, or you don't have to do something, or if you've got an earthquake zone, then certain things apply or don't apply. So we should have.
Are you saying we should have, we should have larger sized ones that people can actually reference? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I think I understand is.
Because the WUWE map is the WUWE map that the fire department created for Fairfax that's in the general plan. That's relatively up to date. It's, it's not a very old map.
Yes.
I'm not sure I'm understanding.
I, well, I think I understand because in reviewing Senate Bill 35, there are certain exclusions of the non-discretionary review of, of projects, if, for example, they're in flood zones. So the question is, going on a parcel by parcel basis, do we have something that really clearly identifies that? The flood stuff is actually a little bit tricky. The, the WUWE maps that are available are very accurate and digitally formatted, so some of that, I'm not sure, we'll probably need to look into some of the hazard stuff as it relates to things like what Senate Bill 35 says, does or doesn't apply.
And just any, in general, any map that we have in that safety element should be reviewed to make sure that what we have is current.
Can I ask a question? Is this, oh, sorry. I was just going to ask, is this different than what is offered on Marin maps already? So this is something very specific to, because a lot of that information is already on there. But, so how does it differ?
You know, I spent a lot of time working on maps and the open space conservation elements for the general plan. And in the open space element, we had Kennings and Associates put together a map of open space, which we acknowledged was even out of date when it got printed for the first time. And so one of the programs in the open space element is to update that map of open space and to continuously update it. And I think, given that we can amend the general plan four times a year, what Cindy is pointing out is, is a key, that we should use that same kind of language from the open space map and address other maps. Now, that's not to say that if we put something in the general plan that says we're going to have to update a map, that it's ever going to happen, because I know for a fact that the open space committee is a little overwhelmed. They haven't gotten their map that they knew from the very beginning needed to be updated, updated. I don't think they have the, the resources to do that. But I think what you're saying is a good point. We should at least have a list of maps and identify which one of them, which one of the ones on those lists need to be updated periodically and prioritize that update. So I just think that's another thing for the town that will, because nobody else is at the, the point man on this, is going to fall to the planning department again.
Yes, and, and as we go through applications where those are relevant, we will obviously need to focus our efforts and make sure that the information that we have is, is accurate, current, relevant, et cetera. So we're well aware that there's some, some challenges and some needs to do so.
And these, those maps not only were current as of the time when the general plan was finalized, but some of them, they came from different sources and they had different levels of what we maybe well remembers as, I'm sure, just some of them we looked at and there were maps we decided not even to put into the general plan because they just seemed almost arbitrary, you know? And then there were others that seemed very accurate and, you know, they vary in quality, basically. And as you say, they also vary in scale and they're hard to overlay with each other. So, but, I mean, you, you mentioned the general plan being kind of like the constitution for the town. So the Constitution of the United States says that there would be, says how representatives for the House of Representatives are allocated, but it doesn't have the list of members of the House of Representatives, and it doesn't even say how many members there are in the House, because all that is changing. So, you know, there's some sorts of things that maybe are in the general plan that that doesn't necessarily mean that that has to be our source of the most accurate map. If there's a newer, more accurate map for the same thing, that we can all agree is not somebody's agenda to use that map, it's just, yes, this is generally agreed upon, objective information here, then, you know, it would seem like that would be, and if we revise the general plan at any point, we could say, you know, instead of using this map, use the currently available map of that type, you know, to refer to it, but, like landslide maps and things like that. I mean, we, I remember there were some of them that you just, we were trying to refer to the concept in the general plan, but you couldn't find a map that was worth a darn, you know? We actually, I think, even had a program in there to bring together some people who have some long history in Fairfax and try to, try to create some of our own maps, because they would probably be better than anything we could find.
Yep.
Okay, my, three other ones, quick. Has the town ever done a count of what may be considered unapproved second units? I mean, I hear numbers kind of batted around about how many may be out there, but I, I guess my question is, have we, has the town ever done some kind of assessment?
When I started here, there was a list that was given to me, and it was, it's very, it was created by driving up and down the streets and looking for places that might have two mailboxes or a path that ran down the side of a house. So it was, it was kind of, it seemed to me not very well done. It was like a visual, and then they went through the files and they just tried to put something together. I'm not sure how you would do that. I mean, I'm not sure how you would do it, because we can't go into, into people's houses, we can't go onto their property without their approval, so they did the best they could. But I don't know how, how accurate it was.
Okay. And then the other two quick ones, I noticed we don't have the audio anymore of our meetings. It's just the video. I saw that. Do you know, being posted, know anything about that?
Well, the video with audio included.
Right, but we used, there was a separate audio file. And I haven't, and I'm not sure I've seen that on the council.
You'll have to ask the clerk.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know why.
And then, our minutes are a little bit behind, so I thought, I mean, online? Okay.
Okay.
I would like to make a comment and a recommendation that then you reach out to Diane Cossey to talk to her about her ideas to partner with some of the colleges, universities in the Bay Area. She's particularly thinking about, I think it was Berkeley that has some kind of planning and architecture school that she felt their students might be able to sort of work with us as a town on implementing a variety of the different things in the general plan. So I just want to recommend you give Diana a call and, and talk to her about her ideas on this, because I find them very interesting.
Okay. I just, I'd like to, sort of project based, but I'm just curious about what's happening with the, with the Java Coffee Hut? Whether they're going to get their bathroom deal worked out and what's happening? I mean, it looks good, you know, the, the physical plant there that they have, it's, it's nice, the sign is, is pretty nice. I understand that got debated also. But it just doesn't seem like anything is going on to get rid of that trailer in the parking lot. And I just, just asking, actually, what's, what's going on?
So they provided us with letters from, from the Good Earth, and then I guess there's some kind of a yoga place that opens early behind the, now I've forgotten the name.
Avatar.
Avatar, thank you. What's the name of it? Is, is it yoga?
I thought it was a temple of, or something.
Yeah, something.
Yoga center.
A place that opens early that will provide bathroom access when the Good Earth isn't open, and then the Good Earth, so they brought us updated letters from both those businesses indicating that they're willing to provide the access to their bathrooms. And they are still dealing with the health department on the interior of their building, so. We, we don't know. We heard that they, what we're hearing is that they. We heard that they, what we're hearing is that they hadn't actually turned their plans into the environmental health department until just recently. So it usually takes a while to get through that department.
I stopped in...
We're not holding it up.
No, we're not holding it up, no. I stopped in a few days ago just because I was in there and there was someone, someone in there. She didn't seem to be a person who was doing construction, so I don't know about the accuracy of her information. But the thing I noticed was that all the kitchen equipment, all the stainless steel equipment was just sort of shoved in there and stacked in. None of it was installed in the kitchen. So it just seemed to me like it was kind of a ways from being ready to go. And I wasn't sure. The sign is up, everything is, looks great on the outside, but on the inside, it just looks like a kind of a warehouse of kitchen equipment. So I don't know. People keep asking about it. And the barbecue place as well, you know, what's going on with these things? My answer is always, it's not us. We've okayed everything they've asked us to, and then okayed extensions on them. And... Sometimes, you know, one of the, one of the proposals that's kind of mentioned a few times in here is limits on, you know, permits. And I think especially for commercial properties because they're so visible and it makes the town look a little shabby, you know, while that's being built and stuff. So I think what we need to do, it's going to be one of my ideas here, is that we need to sort of put some kind of frequent review of these permits and, not necessarily redtag, but, you know, see if we can, really see if we can help them to get stuff done and/or require bonding, you know, completion bonding or something like that, that we can...
Yeah.
...start to require so that they don't run out of money halfway through a development, which I think sort of happened in San Anselmo a couple of times. And, you know, it's really, we don't want that, so.
Yeah, I was discussing this very issue with two planning directors on a way over to a conference in Oakland. And they were saying that they, in their communities, people get very vociferous about stalled projects and construction debris and, you know, all the attendant things that you don't like when projects aren't wrapped up and cleaned up. And they have expiration dates on their approvals. And they bond, they have fines, and they've said, since they've incorporated those, they've had a much better rate of compliance with taking projects to completion because obviously, you know, money talks. And so when there's fines, and some of these can be levied on a daily basis, it really puts some giddy up in people who otherwise just kind of whatever. And I don't know if people in Fairfax really complain like other communities, but it's certainly, I think it's in the list in terms of expiring projects. And there are ordinances on codes in Marin to that, to that issue. So it's certainly something we could discuss as part of our work program going forward.
Thanks.
I've just reviewed them. Do people have comments?
I have a comment. At the, in the middle of page three, it says I was absent from the Java Hut decision-making. I prefer to say I was recused.
We'll make that change.
I didn't find any corrections. I thought they were magnificent.
Is that it? So with that amendment, is the commission ready to approve those?
I'll move to approve the minutes from whichever, September 21st, with that one amendment that Mimi suggested.
Second.
All those approving, say aye.
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 Abstain.
You abstain, you were not here. Okay, that makes sense. Two abstentions then, and the motion carries.
That's it?
Can I make him, oh.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yay.